To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna move back a little tiny bit. So you're good.
I hereby announce that this meeting is being held in accordance with Chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act. Proper notice of meeting dates has been given to Morris Newsbeat and the Morris County Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider a reaching decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Karen, roll call, please.
Mr. Organlick?
Present.
Mr. Wolf? Mr. Bezos?
Here.
Mrs. Stacker?
Present.
Mr. Kevaglia?
Present.
Mr. Houston?
Present.
Mr. Kelly? Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mrs. McCluskey?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda are comments from the public. This is specifically for matters that are not on tonight's agenda.
Hi, everyone.
So state your first and last name, spell your last. I know you've got a drum.
Joanne Dugan, D-U-G-A-N, 31 Cantfield Place. I don't know if this is the proper form for this, but I noticed that the past few days there's been some utility work being done at the Friendly's site, PSE&amp;G, and I thought somebody said JCP&amp;Al was there. And I noticed tonight when I was leaving my house to come out there, the street light on the corner of Dayton and Speedwell is out, the one that's closest to the pedestrian crosswalk. So I don't know if that was something that was done when they were doing utility work at the Friendly's property, but that's a very bad place to have the light out to right the closest one to the crosswalk. So just wanted to make that, you know, known that I don't know if it had anything to do with the utility work, but that should be, like, taken care of, like, ASAP.
You said, where is the street light?
It's on the corner, the Friendly's corner, on Dayton and Speedwell, like, the one that's, like, almost right next to the crosswalk.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Nancy Mira Belle, 3 Cornine Lane, M-I-R-A-B-E-L-L-E. This is just sort of a general question. If a variance is not approved, does the Board have to give a reason? Or not approve it?
I actually don't have the answer to that question.
Does anyone?
Yes. Whenever, but the yes... The yes has to be tempered by when you say, "Do they have to give?" Lots of resolutions may or may not. The yes that they have to give it is that if a party has asked for variance and believed that they put on testimony that's sufficient, and it's denied without giving the reasons for the denial, the court, if they do their job right, would say there is sufficient evidence the Board has to give these reasons for granting or not granting what was asked for by the law. So when you say, "Do they have to give it?" If it is going to be reviewed by a court above them, yes.
Okay, but the applicant doesn't necessarily get a reason why at the time that the variance is not approved. I mean, if I was asking for a variance for my little property or whatever, and for some reason, because I wouldn't know, the variance was not approved, do you, does the Board just say, "This is not approved," and not tell me why? I mean, maybe I could fix something in what I'm asking for without having to go to a court or anything else.
Typically, and the way it's done uniformly throughout the state of New Jersey is that there are two kinds of actions that are taken. One, vote on it on simple application, but two, memorialization. And the court and municipal land usually will make pretty clear that the, because the sequence that they vote yes for, that they have theoretically, they have all the evidence that's been presented, they have processed that, and people vote on that. That is the, then the written justification for it, the explanation that you may be hinting at, is put together in the written resolution, which is voted on at the next time. That's the reasons that, I think, and I don't want to be reading your mind, but the reasons that set forth why a variance would or would not be granted is in a written resolution which the Board gets a chance to look at before, and they can say, "Yes, that's the reasons why that is, or that's not," or change it. So that's where, that's where the reasons tend to be, in the written form. And that's, I refer too long, obviously oftentimes what's called the Bible. This is written by William Cox, he passed away, but then a few other people that, that talk about every single part of the municipal land is one, what planning is on what you should do, and explain it. That's, it's a real good explanation of what you're asking for there, that typically all the reasons that are in it, that justify it, are pulled from the testimony, the record, the evidence exhibits, put in the resolution, and then that's voted on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tom Battalies, B-A-T-T-A-G-L-I-E-S-Z, 2 Cutler Road. So first, I just wanted to thank the Chair, Mike, for trying to assist with some details on my question from the last meeting, which was how, how we could prove out the performance standards, or what was expected in terms of proving the performance standards on the noise and air quality and odors. And I know, Bill, you tried to answer it as well at the last council meeting. And, Mike, I got your latest note, which basically refers to the performance standards ordinance in the zoning rules, I guess. I guess the open question that I have is, you know, how specifically would the, what are the expectations in terms of report testing, you know, exact specifications on testing and so forth? Like, what, has there, this ever been done on any other restaurant? Where, we had it in MON, but that's a specific, you know, industrial application, so it's pretty straightforward there. But for a restaurant, like Chick-fil-A, was anything ever done for that? Or Chipotle, or?
So based on what I looked into and what I could find, I couldn't find anything beyond opening. So once they opened and met the standards that they needed to meet, I was not able to find anything.
Was anything documented? Like, when it opened or before it opened in terms of how they were meeting the standards, or?
Can I just snip into it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, the performance standards didn't exist when those restaurants were approved. They were put in after MON. We have, actually, the application that's on tonight did, does have to do a noise study. I think they had to do it as a condition of their approval for the office building and then, you know, after it was built. And then, I guess also for phase two. So it has been used on some of the larger site applications, but it wouldn't have been used for Chick-fil-A, which I think was approved in 2017, I think. And Chipotle, I'm not totally sure. But it was before. It was before the performance standards.
So, so there's no similar situation? This would be the first situation where it has to be applied, basically, for something like a restaurant?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't know if you or Mr. Riden, the engineer, have any specifics on, you know, what kind of report would need to be brought forward to show that? I mean, I doubt that the town has the proper testing equipment, for example, to prove that the air pollution standards are not being ceded, or that you have odor detecting equipment to make sure there's not odors at the property line, which, you know, some of this wording, honestly, if this is the first time it's being applied, I think we can probably all assume that when you walk past a McDonald's, for instance, or any fast food restaurant for that, and it doesn't have to be McDonald's, you smell french fries or burgers or whatever at the property line, right? So some of these, the way this ordinance is written seems pretty broad, I would say. Also for the air, the air quality language, which, you know, it says, for instance, "No substance shall be emitted into the atmosphere in quantities which are injurious to human, plant, or animal life, or to property, or which interfere unreasonably with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property anywhere in the borough." And I think of the resident on the street that came to the council meeting, I think it was, that basically has an asthmatic child. And I would think that that would be a situation that, to me, clearly interferes with the comfortable enjoyment, you know, of one's property. So exactly, you know, how, how do you expect the proof to be shown by the applicant to prove that they're in conformance with all these standards?
Well, I can't tell you exactly at this point. The, the, the standards are prescribed in the Borough Ordinance, and they largely relate to state statutes and other regulatory bodies. And we will put together a protocol for each and every one of those, and the developer, the builder, the contractor, whoever it is, will have to provide all the test equipment, all the people that do it. We will approve the protocols before they are done. We will oversee them all, and we will prepare a report of it. So that's the way it's gonna go. But that's, you know, that's the ways off yet, and we will, we'll get to that.
Okay. When the time comes, I'm assuming that you, you'll be the one that's doing the approval?
That's correct.
Okay. Will that be pub, will that be available at the Planning Board office with whatever documentation they're submitting to you for approval in advance, or how does that work?
Well, I just wanna, just wanna clarify with everybody that the Planning Board is no longer involved in McDonald's application. Once the resolution was adopted and finalized, they're out of it. They have no jurisdiction, no oversight, and there's nothing else for them to do or decide. Now it's in administration, construction, and engineering.
Okay.
All right. So any reports I do, we file with the clerk. You can get those through asking or Oprah request, or however you wanna do it.
Okay. But before they do the testing, whatever that testing looks like, you're saying it's not yet documented, how that will look? You will receive some kind of proposal, right? That describes what they will do and what they're going to submit? And that will be on file before the testing is performed?
I don't know. I can't say that it will.
Okay.
Again, this is, this is in our jurisdiction, construction office, my office, administration.
Okay. Would you expect that the testing be shown over a course of various conditions as opposed to just a one-off, check the box, like, "We met the acceptable level," or "We don't smell anything," or "There was no air pollution," that kind of thing?
Well, I don't wanna commit to anything here, and I don't wanna get into a long discussion about how we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
But I would think for the initial test, we would set up some reasonable operational scenarios to test. But then the key here is ongoing. They have to keep remaining compliant with those things. And, and if they don't, the construction official has the right to rescind their certificate of occupancy. So this is a serious business that they have to comply with. And, and, listen, a lot of, a lot of laws and ordinances are by compliance by complaint. Okay? And that's, that's the way things go. I mean, there'll be MON, and people are always around here from, through the town, myself. So if something's noted, we'll, we'll call it out. But we would expect to get calls, and I'm sure we will, from the neighbors.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's all to be developed, and it's in, it's in our hands right now.
Okay, just one other question to that, because I understand it's still in the development. So for, if there are complaints, and I completely agree, you know, working in this space, that all these issues are come and go, you know? Today, we can smell something or hear something, and tomorrow you don't, kind of thing, or next hour versus last hour, right? So if neighbors are complaining, does that mean that they have to then submit a new report, do additional testing? Because since the town doesn't have the capability to prove whether they're in compliance or not, as opposed to, for example, a litter ordinance or something, you know, where you can physically see?
Maybe all of those things, okay?
Okay.
The, the, the main one is noise, right? So there's some noise going on at a property. It doesn't have to be a commercial property, you know, your neighbor's making too much noise.
Sure.
By the time somebody gets there, it's, it's gone, it's turned off. So how do you measure it? How do you document it? So those, those things are difficult. But that doesn't mean they're impossible, okay? So that's all, that's really all I have to say at this point.
Thanks. Okay. So just, just so I understand in terms of timeline, like, when, do you guys have any idea when they would be submitting the proposal on how they will do the testing and show proof, or what is the?
I can't, I can't answer that directly now, but it's not gonna be for quite a while. This project's gonna take a year to complete. So there's, there's, they have to even go, again, I'm extending the discussion here. They have to go through a compliance period right now for all the conditions that were adopted in the resolution before, before they even put a shovel in the ground. So that's gonna be several months.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a long process.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'll close this portion of the agenda. Next on the agenda are the resolutions for committee appointments from 2025. This was a carryover from last month. Resolution number 25-03 for the Minor Site Plan Committee. I move that that resolution, adopting the Minor Site Plan Committee for the year 2025, be approved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Karen, roll call, please.
Mr. Organlick?
Yes.
Mr. Bezos?
Yes.
Mrs. Stacker? Mr. Kevaglia?
I didn't say anything yet, Karen. Sorry. I just gotta say, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so. Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Stacker?
Sorry, yes.
You believe me?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kevaglia?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCluskey?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 25-01 for the Master Plan Review Committee. I move that that resolution, adopting the Master Plan Committee for the year 2025, also be approved. Can I have a second?
25-04.
25-04.
Okay. I didn't hear who seconded that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Karen, roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Organlick?
Yes.
Mr. Bezos?
Yes.
Mrs. Stacker?
Yes.
Mr. Kevaglia?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCluskey?
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda are the correspondences and bills. Karen, are there correspondences and bills?
Yes, there is, and I believe in Mr. Judd's absence, Mrs. Stacker is gonna read them.
Yep. Okay. So the first is purchase order number Vendor Marazidi Falcon LLP. The amount of $1,942.50. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Or do I do them all together?
You do.
Okay. Okay, great. Second one is purchase order number for Anderson and Denfler, the amount of $290.10. And the third one is purchase order number Phillips Price Greel, in the amount of $160. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
No. Mrs. Stack, are you approving them? First, it's first.
You recommend it?
Oh, I recommend that these be approved.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right.
Okay.
Karen, roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Organlick?
Yes.
Mr. Bezos?
Yes.
Mrs. Stacker?
Yes.
Mr. Kevaglia?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCluskey?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I want to ask all board members who have received a copy of tonight's agenda to review all items remaining on the agenda and announce any recusals that may be warranted.
I will excuse myself from the board.
Mr. Bezos, that's 109 Mountain Way and the Route 10, Lipton Road, correct?
Mm-hmm. There's no interference with the decision?
With?
Mountain Way. No one else is interfering on the Mountain Way? Okay.
Okay.
I can hear you, Mr. Organlick.
I was just ensuring no one else was in the, in the range for Mountain Way, in, in the window of?
It's 200 feet.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no one on this board is on that list.
Or basically, if you're friends with them.
Right.
Okay, so Mr. Bezos, 01, okay. What I'd like to do is I'd like to switch the new business with the applications on the agenda, so that Mr. Bezos can participate in that portion, and then you can chat out after that. So the other thing that I also want to mention is Mr. Houston has recently created a checklist review committee as part of reviewing the application process. This committee, consisting of Dave Schultz, Bill Houston, Bill Riden, and myself, are charged with approving the overall process, starting with the checklist up through completeness. As part of the committee, I plan to provide updates to the Planning Board for input and concurrence once we have information to report. The committee has committed to meeting monthly starting in March. So, Mr. Houston, I don't know if you want to add to that, but that's more of an announcement of something that just occurred a few days back.
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. The next item on, on, next item is an amendment to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Element of the Master Plan. One of the roles of the Planning Board is the adoption, reexamination, and amendment of the Borough Master Plan. Tonight, the Board will be considering an amendment to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Element to update the list of parks and open spaces. The last time this plan element was done was in 2003. Karen, is everything in order related to noticing the state, county, and surrounding towns required?
Yes, yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Laney to walk us through the planning methodology.
Sure.
Mr. Brewer?
I'm just, specifically, where you went. Everybody speaks at a hearing to amend a master plan, you get a warning. So please raise your right hand, state your name.
Elizabeth Laney.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth itself?
I do.
Please proceed.
So as, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you noted, this is an update to the inventory of open space and recreation and conservation easements that exist in the borough. And as you indicated, And as you indicated, the last time an open space element was done for the master plan was 2003. And so the question I'm sure is why now? Why doing this now? So, in 2023, the county had reached out to the borough to provide an inventory, which is essentially the same inventory that's in this plan. Because the county was sort of doing, you know, updating their mapping, updating their planning. And so Leon Hall and I at the time, you know, working with members of the planning board, produced that inventory, which essentially is in this element. What kind of pushed it further was in 2024, in October 2024, as I'm sure everybody knows, we're heading into the fourth round of affordable housing. And in October 2024, the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, issued numbers for all the municipalities. As for what your perspective need and your present need of your affordable housing obligation. A couple of, there are like three factors that go into determining your need. Two of the factors were fairly easily verifiable, you know, you could just sort of look up the data and say, okay. But the third factor had to do with developable land, and that was less easy to verify. It was complete, you know, everybody was sort of saying, well, what land? What, what properties? What are you talking about? So after a lot of, you know, municipalities, including Morris Plains, sort of screamed, you know, and issued an upper request to DCA, in, I guess it was the end of November or December, they issued their mapping. And when we looked at the mapping from Morris Plains, what we found is that a lot of the more recent open space acquisitions were shown as developable. And, and so, you know, there was a concern, especially as we go through this affordable housing process, that we have an inventory in our master plan of all the open space, you know, whether it be passive open space, meaning, you know, it could just be wooded areas or detention basins, or active recreation, or even the conservation elements. So, you know, there were just things like, that were considered developable, like Sylvan Pool, or, um, you know, some of the, uh, open, the couple parcels that had been acquired through the county open space funds. So, that's really, in some ways, is a little bit housekeeping, but it's also, um, to make sure that we do have listed in our master plan all of the existing open space in Morris Plains. And so there's, as you'll see, there's nothing, there's no policy recommendations, there's no action recommendations, it's really purely factual inventory, just to make sure it's all in there and on the map. So I, that's really all I have, any other questions?
Um, Mr. Brewer, are there any legal items that you need to bring up related to this?
Uh, I don't think so, other than, um, you know, a hearing master plan is the presentation of the master plan, it's not, um, or the witness cross-examination, members of the public have a, also have a right to present testimony, um, but there can be technical questions from the board, if there are any questions about that. I think this gives a very good summary of, this is a very small element, specific element of the master plan, it's small and it's really factual adding to a list.
I still have a question.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If I may.
Yeah.
Were, were there any changes that would have steered the force of usable property in a different direction by the adjustments you made on the, on the map?
Are you saying would DCA have made changes?
In other words, did the horse get out of the barn before this update was done?
Well, the...
And I'm not sure that's a decent question to ask.
No, it is, but I think the question, I think what you're asking, and the answer I would give is that, in a whole separate track, we have put, sort of pushed back at the state to say those, these properties aren't developable, they're our own parkland.
Okay, so we're refining.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Lainey, this, um, can you maybe just explain what we went from and what we're at now in terms of acreage?
Sure, yeah.
Total developable land?
Yes, so we, uh, when DCA issued their data in October, they said we had 36 developable acres, and we are down to 12. So we were able to eliminate a lot.
And, and as you said before, some of those were, um, areas like, for example, there's a sliver next to the New Jersey Transit Train Track and some other, some other spaces that were involved in the DCA calculations that, that your estimation really didn't, didn't apply, correct?
Well, correct. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, that doesn't include what she's doing now?
Yes, excuse me, Mayor.
Those are separate easements and whatnot, what she's doing is taking care of our, our open space and our park property, not private property easements and the, it's just our own.
This includes everything, but the borough owns those conservation easements, you know, so the easement aspect. But they're kind of overlap, but they're not completely the same. So there, there were things on DCA's developable acreage that moved beyond open space, you know, that, that were included, that we would have said no, but it's not, it's not parks and open space, but it's, it's something else, there's another reason we excluded it. So they're, they're overlapping processes, but not the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public on this amendment? Okay, the next order of business then is to adopt Resolution 25-06. Each board member has a copy by email and hard copy. Mr. Brewer, do we need to read this resolution?
Leading is an interesting one, which is important, it's typically had the attorney read the resolution, not required by law, it's typically been a practice in the board, so it's your choice.
So I would say if it's been a practice, let's read it.
Yeah. Prepared resolution, the planning board resolution number 25-06, resolution to adopt amendment to the open space and recreation plan element of the borough of Morris Plains master plan. Whereas NJSA 40:55D-28 authorizes the planning board to prepare and, after a public hearing, adopt or amend a master plan or components thereof to guide the use of lands within the municipality in a manner that protects public health and safety and promotes the public welfare. And whereas, the Morris Plains Planning Board conducted a public hearing on February 10th, 2025, to consider the adoption of the amendment to the open space and recreation plan element of the borough of Morris Plains master plan entitled, quote, "Amendment to the Borough of Morris Plains Open Space and Recreation Plan Element of the Master Plan to Update the Inventory of Resources," close quote, and prepared by Elizabeth Laheny, AICP, PP of Phillips Price Greidel Laheny Hughes, master plan amendment report. And whereas, a notice of said public hearing was duly published in the official newspaper, and written notices were served upon clerks of adjoining municipalities and upon the Morris County Planning Board, all as required by the provisions of NJSA 40:55D-13. And whereas, at said public hearing, the aforementioned document was presented to the public, and members of the public were given an opportunity to be heard. And whereas, during the public hearing, Elizabeth Laheny testified about open space and recreation resources acquired and or created since 2003. And whereas, the board finds that the master plan amendment report is consistent with the physical, economic, and social development of the borough of Morris Plains and the purposes of the municipal land use law as stated in NJSA 40:55D-2. Now therefore, be it resolved by the planning board of the borough of Morris Plains and the county of Morris and state of New Jersey on this 10th day of February 2025 as follows. One, the board hereby adopts the master plan amendment report in the form considered by the board and attached hereto, and the planning board secretary is directed to record this date, February 10th, 2025, as the date of its adoption. Two, the board secretary is authorized and directed to provide notice of this action in accordance with NJSA 40:55D-13. Three, the planning board secretary is hereby directed to forward a copy of the master plan amendment report, together with a copy of this resolution, to the Office of Planning Advocacy and to the Morris County Planning Board as required by law. Four, this resolution shall take effect as provided by law.
With that, can I have a motion to approve the Resolution 25-06, adopting the amendment to the borough of Morris Plains Open Space and Recreation Plan Element of the master plan to update the inventory of resources?
So, second?
I'll second it.
I second it. Okay, was that Mr. Houston that you're talking?
No, it was Mayor Carr.
And Mrs. McCloskey seconded it. Karen Roque, please.
Okay. Mr. Organick?
Yes.
Mr. Bezzold?
Yes.
Mrs. Stecker?
Yes.
Mr. Kabaglia?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCloskey?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bezzold, free to go.
The record is to reflect with Mr. Bezzold is leaving the dais and will leave the room, correct?
I'm leaving the room. Everybody have a good week.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, the next items on the agenda are our applications for tonight. The first one, PV-4-24, R Keller Construction, 109 Mountain Way, Block 67, Lot 7.1. This is to review the revised application for completeness, completeless, completeness only, no testimony will be heard tonight. Is there a representative from the applicant here tonight? Okay, just want to mention, Karen, that the applicant, your attorney, is here, present. So, our professionals have provided their reports on the latest, um, I guess latest feedback dated February 6th, so I'll ask Mr. Ryden to walk us through his portion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I submitted my report dated February 6th, 2025. This application is ready to proceed, subject to approval of waivers by the board. There are 14 waiver requests, eight of them on the Checklist A, six of them on the Checklist F, recommended that all of these waiver requests are valid and that can be approved by the board, and I would recommend that you do so in accordance with my, my report.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, Ms. Lainey, I'll ask you to do the same, sorry, your February 6th report.
Sure, I have a completeness letter to the board dated February 6th, 2025. I defer a few of the engineering items to Engineer Ryden, but I, based on his recommendations, I will concur. And so at this point, I would recommend that the application be deemed complete from a planning standpoint.
Great. Board have any questions? Okay, if no additional questions, with the recommendation from both professionals, can I have a motion to deem the application complete and grant the waivers requested?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Karen Roque?
Okay. Mr. Organick?
Yes.
Mrs. Stecker?
Yes.
Mr. Kabaglia?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mrs. McCloskey, I just want to make sure it was Mrs. McCloskey and Mrs. Stecker, the second, did I make that correct?
Correct.
Okay, next item on the agenda is application, PV-3-24, 1625 Route 10 LLC, Lot 171, Lot 45.2, and 225 Littleton Road LLC, Lot 171, Lot 45.3. Uh, this is a public hearing to include testimony from the applicant experts. At this time, I would like testimony not to go beyond 10 o'clock, new testimony, if that's okay?
That's fine.
And obviously, representation from the applicant.
Yeah, for the record, Tom Malman, M-A-L-M-A, on the date 50th in Parsippany, here on behalf of the applicants. And you may recall, we were here almost a year ago, time flies, back in March, this board granted approval, site plan approval for the entire property, and what we call Phase 1 approval, which is kind of modifying the existing office building on the 202 side of the property. I'm pleased to report, we're hoping to start work on that building pretty soon, with through resolution compliance, developers agreement, we're gonna be providing pretty soon for a construction meeting, but this should be started pretty soon. But tonight's application is for minor amendments to that site plan approval, we hear about minor changes in parking, drainage, landscaping, but really it's for what we call Phase 2. And if you recall the plan, I'll kind of walk you through this in our presentation. Phase 2 involves what we call Building B, which is in the back of the property, it's going to be mostly a self-source facility with some retail in it, and there's minor changes around that area that's part of Phase 2, but that's what we're asking for. So the balance of the site, kind of the front of the site where the retail is going to be, is not changing at all at tonight, that's still part of the original site plan, we expect to come back over time, maybe this year, next year, as those tenants, you know, materialize, as you go further develop the site. Tonight's really focusing on Building B in the back and minor changes to the original site plan. Uh, we have two witnesses, Eric Keller, ready to go here, is our engineer, Chuck Dees, our architect, is here, we're gonna walk you through again what we did a year ago and then kind of work into what's going on today. The plan you're gonna see tonight is fully compliant with your ordinance in terms of the use, in terms of the height, in terms of coverage, in terms of the setbacks, except for some sign issues, we'll talk to you about that, so there's some variances for some signs, relatively minor changes to what we had before, we're also adding some signs on Building B that we've talked about, but otherwise, this is a compliant application. Uh, we have reports from your consultants, we'll address all those as part of our presentation, there's nothing in it that causes any concern, and we'll deal with all those comments and hopefully have your consultants agree that we're doing what we need to do to make this thing work properly. So unless you have questions, then me, I'll call Mr. Keller.
Before we do that, Karen, do we have proof of service access in Esper?
Yes, everything is in order.
Okay.
Mr. Malman, you have to make it all.
Oh, I see, so we only have one microphone, so I better shift over.
Okay.
And if you do, it's Keller.
Please state your names, about your last.
Eric Keller, K-E-L-L-E-R.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, you're licensed engineer in this state?
I am.
License number?
32054.
That does give you the mail a lot of time. So you've testified?
Issued in 1987.
So you testified before this board before?
Yes.
You're familiar with this application, the property, the plan's on file?
Yes.
Okay. Have you questions regarding us qualifications as an engineer?
My license is still in good standing, both as an engineer and a planner.
Terrific. All right, so Mr. Keller, why don't we start?
Excuse me one second, though, I don't know if you want to swear in our two professionals?
Sounds like you do not need to do that, according to Mr. Brewer.
I don't need to be? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Keller, why don't we start by kind of going back in time, talk about what the board approved about a year ago, it was March of 2024. Looks like you're marking this as A1, is that correct? Just tell us what it is before you get a good detail.
Okay, A1, because this is not part of our supplemental package, is Sheet 6 of 33 of the overall and Phase 1 plans. I put this up here just because this is what was approved, uh, just about a year ago. This is entitled signage and striping plan, full buildout for Highline Marketplace. This is dated August 18th of 2023, last revised July 22nd, 24.
Well, I guess we should note the name of the project has changed, correct? Can we just run through that for us, so we don't get confused?
Yes.
Same project, just different name?
Yes, we're, this project is now called Crossings at 10, um, which is what you will see on the 21 sheet set of plans that we submitted for Phase 2. The, uh, so we received preliminary site plan approval with variances and a minor subdivision for the entire project in accordance with the zoning criteria, and we received final approval for Phase 1, which is the existing 225 Littleton Road building and the associated parking lot, which is on the lot in IOE's, uh, which is, uh, 45.03. The remainder lot, the eastern part, is Lot 45.02, property is still located in the YL2 mixed-use commercials, commercial use overlay zone, which permits the uses that are proposed, office, retail, restaurants, self-storage, supermarket, and many others. The application before you tonight for Phase 2, which I'll get to in a minute, is consistent with that zoning and the prior site plan approval.
Before we get to that, just back to the, the original plan, just talk about the, the access as proposed and existing, kind of run through that quickly, remind the board how this is gonna work.
The access to the site, there's a shared driveway with the Stop &amp; Shop, which goes out to a signalized intersection at Littleton Road, which goes through the northwestern portion of Lot 45.03, onto the Stop &amp; Shop lot, and then onto, out to Littleton Road. There are currently two driveways to Johnson Road, we're going to continue to have two driveways out to Johnson Road with this plan, though they will be in somewhat different locations. And the big change is that we are seeking a driveway access to Route 10, which is with the OK.
So it doesn't exist yet?
It does not exist yet. The 1625 Route 10 building that Whitekirt is now occupying is located in the midst of the frontage along Route 10, I'm sure you've seen it many, many times over many, many years. We are seeking amended preliminary site plan approval for the entire tract for four reasons. One, this plan shows a detention basin underneath the power lines, JCP and L said, can't do that. So we have eliminated that, and I'll show that when I get to, um, to the Phase 2 plan. To replace that basin, we enlarged Basin 1, which is in the southeast corner of the property. They both drained to the same location, so we're not changing the overall drainage patterns. Since we were no longer able to place a basin underneath the power lines, there is existing parking underneath those power lines beyond where it was shown on this plan. We have maintained that so that we can maintain the amount of parking, um, that we had under this overall plan, because to enlarge the Basin 1, we had to take some parking away. So we just moved it to the north a little bit.
Like an even swap, basically?
Yeah, we basically swapped it out. And, uh, the latest is that Southeast Morris, and this was submitted to the board, Southeast Morris is a water company serving Morris Plains and other communities, uh, they discovered, or it was discovered as we moved forward with the reconstruction of Building A, 225 Littleton, that meter is in the basement, that they don't permit. So, um, Southeast Morris, like many water companies, has, um, required us to install a hot box, we talked about that under the overall plan. So, and I will show that location in a minute, we're going to have to take that meter out of the 225 basement and put it in a hot box beyond the conservation easement that exists along Littleton Road, um, but in the area and outside of the JCP and L easement, so it's going to be off the south, uh, I'm sorry, northwest corner of the 225 building. And one thing I wanted to clarify, we received approval, um, under the, this first, uh, application for the demolition of 1625. Because it's in excess of 100,000 square feet, the board had to agree to that. And I just wanted to clarify, Whitekirt's operations are in that building today.
Just point to that one, please?
Well, I can't.
Well, it's in the front.
It's in the front. All right, let me just make this easier.
Okay.
And I'll mark this as Exhibit A2, and what I'll do is apologize to all the people over here, if you can go over there and maybe see it better if you want to see something. Oh. So I'm gonna mark this as Exhibit A2.
Just tell us what it is.
Yep. So this is entitled Site Plan Rendering, Phase 2, Crossings at 10, it is dated today, prepared by my office, and this is a colored rendering of the site plan documents that have been submitted for this application. 1625 building is the large building in the northern portion of Lot 45.02. That building will be demolished once built, what we call Building A, the 225 Littleton Road, uh, building is, has a TCF, because Whitekirt needs to move their operations from 1625 building into that building. So this will stay, and that was one of the reasons for the Phase 2 plan ending where it did, is that we're holding the curb line along the front of the, or on the south side of the 1625 building. So today, we are seeking, uh, final site plan approval with variances for Building B. That building is the same as was shown on the, on Exhibit A1, the building is oriented, has the same configuration, same uses.
Same size.
Same size, same everything, we have a plaza. The only thing different with the plaza is now part of our stormwater management system that is connected to Basin 1, as you can see on Exhibit A2, there is no basin underneath the power lines. I've placed a red dot, because we're still working with Southeast Morris on the hot box, the specific orientation, but it is beyond the conservation easement, it will be in this lawn area off the northwest corner of the building. So in addition to Building B, we have the parking layout, it is the same layout It is the same layout as what is shown on the overall plan. Obviously, it is truncated at the existing drive aisle along the front of the sixteen-twenty-five building. We are also going to, as part of this phase, relocate the driveway to Johnson Road, this southern driveway to Johnson Road. The northern driveway will stay as it is. The existing parking area on the east side of the sixteen-twenty-five building will not be touched. The helipad stays where it is. All that stays the same. We are making utility improvements, landscape improvements, lighting improvements. We've worked with JCP and L. We've also worked with TC Energy, which is the transmission gas company that has a significant gas main through the same easement area, and we have their approval for construction as well. We are seeking a couple of variances. One is to construct a third freestanding sign in, in the plaza for Building B. The ordinance only allows two freestanding signs. One is the reconstruction of the existing freestanding sign out at Littleton Road, which now says Wiker, and there will be one at Route Ten by the new driveway out to Route Ten.
That was previously approved.
That was previously approved. And this freestanding sign at the plaza is integrated into the clock tower that we had always proposed for Plaza B, but now we've put a sign on that lattice work, and I'll show a, an exhibit a little bit on that. The sign only identifies the center, crossings at ten. It does not identify any individual tenants, unlike the other two freestanding signs, which identify the center and a variety of different tenants, which Mr. Dietz will talk about. And we are also seeking variance for some larger monumented freestanding signs, as well as a third tenant sign for the self-storage facility. There is also, we're requesting a modification of a condition in the original approval, where it said we would not seek approval for any additional phase without having DOT access permit.
Well, it actually gives the board discretion to grant the approval, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
We're asking the board to grant discretion to allow phase-two without the DOT connection.
Correct. And in support of that, we submitted a supplemental traffic study that Mr. Waltz has reviewed, and it indicates that the addition of Building B does not violate any thresholds that the NJ DOT has established for defining what they call a significant increase in traffic, which is one hundred additional peak hour trips. And Building B will not generate any, that level of traffic to the two intersections under the state's control. One is Littleton and Route Ten, and the other is Johnson Road and Route Ten. As part, and this was a discussion at the first application we had, we have shown a sidewalk connection to Signature Place, the rental community just to the south of us. We've run that through Verris Residential, who owns and manages that property, and there's been an easement agreement put together that both Verris and the crossings at ten are concurrent with an agreement on, and we have submitted it to the board attorney for review. The existing shared access out to Route, to Littleton Road, through the Stop and Shop property, is being maintained, and as they said, the Johnson Road driveway is being relocated and realigned. There is a requirement for cross-access easements, for actually cross-access circulation, parking, and utilities. Those have been prepared, and the approval for phase-one required us to file those before certificate of occupancy. So assuming that we don't need to make any tweaks to those, we will do so, and I know Mr. Riden will check that off on his list before he gives us, gives the sign off to the building department for the CUP. Building B, just as a reminder, is a three-story building. The footprint, the size, the area of it is no different than what was previously approved. For phases one and two, what is shown on exhibit A-two, we propose a total of six-hundred-and-ninety-nine parking spaces, where only five-hundred-and-sixty-seven are required. And just a note, and we have this on the plan, the office space in Building A and the office space in sixteen-twenty-five will not be occupied concurrently. So once Building A is, the office space has a TCO, they will be able to move over. So there is not going to be a parking demand associated with those two office components at any given time. We have five ADA spaces proximate to Building B, and then there's another four ADA, ADA spaces that exist by the sixteen-twenty-five building that are being maintained. We have four EV parking spaces proximate to Building B, plus is six EV parking spaces near Building A. Reminder, JCP and L does not permit those EV chargers to be within their easement. So they are all outside of the easement. JCP and L have seen that, and they bless that. The internal sidewalk system that we had developed, as shown on exhibit A-one, is being So there will be connectivity between Buildings A and B. There is connectivity to the sixteen-twenty-five building, and when we move forward with future phases, that will continue to, to expand. We are maintaining the monument sign at the southern Johnson Road driveway. That's permitted, it's permitted to have monument signs at both of the Johnson Road driveways. At this point, we're only going to construct the one at the southern driveway, because we haven't built the northern driveway. And the freestanding sign out at Littleton Road and the shared driveway will be constructed as part of phase-one. The refuse and recycling is generally the same, it's in the same general location. It's slightly different because we've reconfigured that parking area, but it was shown in the southeast corner of Building B. It is still in the southeast corner, and it is along the drive aisle, so it is very accessible to trucks, and they'll be able to access it and circulate around the site. The self-storage facility, the applicant has, because it's a letter of intent, with Cube Smart to operate the self-storage facility, excuse me, on this site building, and the entire site is being, will be owned by sixteen-twenty-five Route Ten LLC. They are the owners of lot forty-five oh-two. Two-twenty-five Littleton LLC owns the western piece, lot forty-five oh-three. But Cube Smart will be the operators of this. They have a number of facilities in the area. One is just to the east on Route Ten, where the old DeMeo Swim Club used to be by two-eighty-seven. They also have facilities on Route Forty-six in Parsippany, Anneau-Rhino in Maristown, Latel Road in East Hanover, Roseland, and one in Randall. So they're well-known, they have a lot of facilities in the area. There, there is an office, and Mr. Dietz will talk about this in more detail. The office is in the southwest corner of Building B. The office itself is open from nine-thirty AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. They are open Sundays from eleven to three. Customer access to the units, they can get into their units. They don't have to necessarily go into the office once they have rented those units, but they also have limitations from six AM to ten PM every day of the week. So there is no overnight access to these units. They have one full-time employee and two part-time employees, so at any given time, there will be no more than two employees in the office for Cube Smart. There are approximately four-hundred-and-sixty storage units, and I only say approximately because we've done a layout based upon their mix of the size of units, which Mr. Dietz will get into. It could change slightly, but we're in that ballpark. They have cameras and alarm systems, so this is a monitored facility. Their lease agreements prohibit hazardous materials, illegal substances, everything else within the units. Their experience, Cube Smart's experience, is that they get about twenty to thirty trips per week to their facility by the customers. The site circulation, there is an internal drop-off area at the rear of Building B where customers can pull their cars in and take materials up into the unit. They can also park in a parking space if they're carrying a box and take it into their unit. The site circulation is the same as previously approved, fully accessible by the borough's fire equipment and delivery vehicles for this building. Again, under the borough and state stormwater regulations, this is considered a major development. On its own, and because it's part of a, of a comprehensive redevelopment of the site, it is a major development. And it is subject to the green infrastructure rules that went into effect, as well as the enhanced precipitation values that went into effect in July of twenty twenty-three. We updated our stormwater report. We had done a stormwater report for the entire site. We updated that to incorporate the changes for Building B, because we've eliminated a basin and enlarged another one that has been submitted to Mr. Riden for his review. And it continues to comply with the borough and state regulations for storms, for each of the storm events, both under current precipitation values and future precipitation values. Basin One is a bio-retention basin. It's going to be heavily planted. We really don't design basins anymore to be big, open grass areas. These have a mix of trees and shrubs, so it will be as attractive as a basin can be. It will still perform its function, and it's designed complies with the applicable regulations for separation, the seasonal high water table, and to drain time after a storm. Sanitary sewer, there's an existing sanitary sewer line that runs along the southern property line. We're going to construct a new sewer line that will serve each of the tenants in Building B, and it will connect into that existing sewer line along the back of the property. Water, this, we had already, always contemplated a hot box. We've shown that on this plan, it's on the site plans. In accordance with the condition of the last approval, that hot box is going to be painted in a neutral earth tone color, subject to this lady's concurrence on the color. It will be screened with plant material, but it's located in the far southeastern portion of the site. Gas, electric, telephone, cable, all will be brought into the site from their respective existing services along Johnson Road. Lighting, we're continuing to use the same lights as we did previously. They're all high-efficiency LED decorative lights. They are all fifteen feet in height, so that we don't run afoul of Jersey Central. I'm tired of saying that, but it's the truth, and they guide everything that we do in their power lines. There are twenty-three single fixtures and thirteen dual-head fixtures. There are also ten wall-mounted fixtures, which also are full cutoff, directing the light downward, and they are mounted at either eight feet or fifteen feet, depending on their specific location. We do have spotlights for the monument sign on Johnson Road. Landscaping, again, we have a extensive landscaping program, though anything within the easement itself is all shrubs, because they don't want trees. And actually, even the TC Energy, who has a gas transmission main, won't even allow us to plant shrubs within their portion of the easement. So, so we have, as I said, bio-retention basin. Outside agency approvals, we have submitted, resubmitted to S-Soil Conservation District for phase-two of this project. They have approved phase-one. We, the county planning board has asked us to resubmit for phase-two. We will do that. The water is being reviewed by Southeast Mars. We're working with them to get that approved. And the DOT, I think when I said here fourteen months ago, twelve months ago, said DOT would take forever. They are taking forever. They gave us, we submitted in November, we were deemed complete in November of twenty-three. We got comments in April of twenty-four. We resubmitted to them in June of twenty-four. I'm still waiting for a response. And believe me, it is not for a lack of trying. I get, you know, almost weekly emails today. I would call them, but they never picked up the phone. So the other reason that we're asking for relief from the, or for the board's discretion when allowing us to proceed with Building B without DOT approval, besides the fact that it doesn't trigger any of their requirements. That's it on my site civil. If you wish, I have four points I want to make on the supplemental traffic study. I can either do that, or I can wait for.
Let's just run through it quickly.
So the traffic study, the supplemental report is dated September twenty-third of twenty-four. The purpose of the report was to confirm that the phase-two project did not result in a significant increase in traffic to the state highway system, which is one hundred additional new trips at any given point within the state system. Our analyses confirmed that indeed the phase-one and phase-two development programs would not result in a significant increase in traffic at either the two intersections at Littleton and Route Ten, or Johnson Road and Route Ten, and this has been affirmed by your board's traffic consultant, Mr. Morris. And that's all I have on traffic. I think you beat it to death significantly the first time we're in.
So let's just review the sign variances, so we're clear with that, and then we'll have Mr. Dietz will go through the signs specifically.
Okay. So.
The same work as A-three. Okay. And we'll have Mr. Dietz, our architect, go through this in more detail. He'll also talk about the building and how it'll work.
So the one variance is.
Just tell us what this is.
I'm sorry.
This looks like a rendering of.
So this is freestanding sign in perspective at Plaza B, crossings at ten, dated today.
This is the front of Building B.
Right.
Could you point to it on A-two?
So this clock tower is located right in the plaza, this notch in Building B, right at the end of the boulevard. So when we get to the point where this boulevard extends all the way out to Route Ten, you're going to drive in, and that's going to be what you see, hopefully, in front of you. you're going to drive in, and that's going to be what you see, hopefully, in front of you. The clock tower and its lattice structure were always part of our plan. As we, as this plan has evolved, the applicants said, "I'd like to put the center name on that lattice work, crossings at 10." So the ordinance only contemplated two freestanding signs.
We already have two approved.
We have one approved at Littleton Road and the shared driveway. We have one approved, sorry, I got to go to Exhibit A1. One approved on Route 10 in front of Building F. So this would be a third sign. Associated with that variance for a third sign, freestanding sign, is that it's not permitted in this location. The ordinance was specific that it permitted sign, freestanding sign, at Littleton Road and a Route 10. So this is neither of those locations. We, and Mr. Dietz will show this more clearly, where each tenant is allowed two wall signs. And CubeSmart has one on the north facade and on the east facade. They would like one over their office, which is on the west side, so that people know that that's where the CubeSmart office is. The, we're asking for a variance to permit the freestanding sign of Route 10. Even though we're not building this part of Phase Two, we're seeking a variance for that to have that sign be 221.58 square feet, whereas 200 square feet is permitted.
So it got a little bit larger than we originally proposed.
Correct, correct.
And we'll explain that, I guess.
And Mr. Dietz will explain it. And then...
The monument sign.
Oh. There's also a monument sign, again, referring to Exhibit A1. There's a monument sign in the island on the Route 10 driveway. That monument sign is permitted to be 125 square feet. We're seeking a variance for 125.7 square feet. And the two monument signs on Johnson Road, one of which would be built as part of Phase Two, they are allowed to be 75 square feet, and we're seeking a variance to make them 76.6 square feet. Very minor changes in the square footage.
They got a little bit wider, basically.
Correct, correct. So those are the variances that we're seeking.
And we'll bring you back later to give the proofs for that after Mr. Dietz testifies.
Correct, yes. That is correct.
You've seen the reports sent from the board's consultants?
Yes.
But you heard me indicate before, we don't object to any of the comments. I guess the question, is it worth to take the time to go through any of these comments, or simply stipulate that we make the changes that are being asked of us?
Just, one of the things that, I just want to touch on, Mr. Ryden asked about the amount of soil disturbance for the Phase Two project.
You referred to his report dated December 30th, does that sound right?
Correct. And this is comment number three on page two. The quantity of soil to be exported, because we are cutting more than we are filling in this portion of the site, is approximately 6,200 cubic yards. For the overall project, because other parts of the project will have fill, was a net export of 9,000 cubic yards. So there's a good chunk of export that will occur in Phase Two.
How much in Phase Two?
How much in Phase Two?
6,238 cubic yards, to be exact.
Thank you. And you can give that detail to Mr. Ryden?
Yes. And that doesn't include the pavement materials and things like that, which is a condition of the, of the overall approval, in that we would rebuild the parking lot. And I covered that. So that's really all I think I want to touch upon in...
Comment six, Eric, is there any, is there any interrelation between Phase One and Phase Two that needs to be sequenced in terms of common, common facilities that are used?
The Phase One is standalone. That is underway, starting very soon. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for later this month sometime. Phase Two, going through agency approvals, resolution compliance, board, obviously, first board approval, you know, is going to be several months out. And, but the, the utilities for Phase Two are separate from the utilities for Phase One. So it's a little unusual, especially water, water, they usually like to give you one connection. Well, they're going to give us three, so. So that's it, unless there's anything else.
Just one other question out of the report, but you, you mentioned the new hot box by, by the 225 or 1625 building. Is that, is that going to be treated the same way as the other one with painting and landscaping and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we'll work on the landscaping, because there's a 200-foot conservation easement between Littleton Road. I made it clear when I talked to Southeast Mars, because they really wanted right up against the right-of-way line. And I says, "I can't, there's a conservation easement, I can't, you know, put it in." The water line runs through there, but, you know, we can't put a structure within, within that conservation easement.
What does that water line feed now, Eric?
Just the 225 building.
And that's adequate to supply these...
Yeah, because the square footage of that building doesn't change. And under DEP regulations, retail and office have the same demand. So the 1625 building is fed by an existing water line off of Johnson Road with an underground vault, which they're allowing us to keep. Because they spent a lot of money putting new meters and stuff in there, and they said they don't want to redo that. So some accommodation we got. Mr. Maltz, review...
That's dated January 16th, is that right?
Correct, correct. Mr. Maltz, in Section A, Item Two, talked about, he raised the point, if Building C, which is in a future phase, was a supermarket, your code requires larger parking spaces, and said, "We would deal with that at the time that we had a tenant." We're not here for that building, so we're striping the parking field between Building B and 1625 with nine-by-18 spaces. If, when we come in for a future phase, there is a determination that 10-foot-wide spaces would be required, we'll just re-strike those spaces. And he, in Section B, goes through his review of our supplemental traffic report, and he concurs at the bottom of Page Two that we would, the 100 new peak-hour trip limit would not require a, would not be affected by this proposed Phase One and Two development. At which he affirms in Number Three, on Page Three, I've given you the update on DOT. I wish I had better news. And in Number Five, we've confirmed, we've reviewed the state access management code, and you count the trip from the site, even though there's a jug handle and it goes through twice. That would be double counting. We only count it once, it's what enters that intersection. And so it only gets counted once. We don't get penalized because they have a jug handle.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Laney's report, this is January 15th.
Correct. So starting on Page Four, I went through what the changes were from the why we're asking for an amended preliminary. It talked about when the demolition of 1625 would occur. One thing I believe that there's a typo in Mr. Laney's report, in the second main bullet, sub-bullet number two, about the monument signs...
On which page, Eric?
Page Four, still. The, the monument signs were approved at 74.66, because 75.66 would have been a variance. And we had no variances for signs on the original. The, we are showing nine retail spaces in Building B. It could be less, probably not more, but Mr. Dietz can weigh in on that. And the self-storage facilities operated by CubeSmart, based on the LOI at this point, but would not be owned by them. The new sign on the clock tower is only for the shopping center, has no tenant signs. It's shown on Exhibit A3. On Page Six, my reading of the monument signs on Johnson Road is that we are permitted a monument sign at each driveway. So we are permitted the two, not just one. So, you know, we all spent a lot of time and effort in writing that ordinance to work. So, so there, we're not seeking a variance for the number of signs. We always showed one monument, one monument sign at each driveway on Johnson Road, and that's what we continue to request, or we're not requesting it, the board's already approved it. We are requesting a variance for a slightly larger monument sign.
And Mr. Dietz will explain it.
Yes. Comment Two on Page Seven, future phasing timeline is going to depend on DOT.
Can I, can I actually ask a amended question about that?
Yes, sure.
So, you know, you have whatever, A through H in buildings, and so you're, you're, have gotten, or in the process of getting approval, A and B. How many more buildings, or how many more phases could you build before you have to, you have to have an entrance from Route 10?
This is it.
This is it, you can't. So you have, you're now have to wait for DOT.
Yes. Unless we come up with a use that does not generate a significant amount of traffic. I don't want to close the door entirely, but, you know, based on where we are, we need to get DOT moving.
All right, can I ask a few, couple more questions?
Yeah, I was actually going to go to the professionals, so, yeah.
Okay. So the lattice sign that you have, can you explain how tall that is in relation to the building? How tall the building is?
I know that the area of the sign that crosses at 10 is just over 96 square feet. So from grade of the plaza to the top of the lattice is 40 feet, 4-0.
Okay, and how tall is the building?
The main parapet is 43, and the little bump-ups are 44.
So the, the main parapet is 43 feet in height?
Okay.
And then there's some bump-ups?
Mr. Dietz will say, Mr. Dietz comes up here.
The reason I'm asking is we specifically don't permit signs facing Signature Place. And so that's why I was, wanted to make sure then, that the building, if I'm understanding correctly, is going to be enclosed in that courtyard.
Correct.
And so it won't be seen...
No.
Either from the east or the south.
No.
All right. And is it lighted?
The, the clock, the clock will be, I would assume that the letters will be illuminated, because otherwise it's not really going to be visible. So I would say the lights are, the lattice obviously is not, it's just a structure.
Okay, and then, when is the timing, what is the timing for the Signature Place connection? Are you going to have to wait until CFO for Building B?
It would be constructed as part of the improvements for Building B. So it would be part of the overall construction. Making, as we make, you know, they build the, the parking lots and the sidewalks, it will connect over to Signature Place. So it will be part of Mr. Ryden's punch list before we get any kind of sign-off for Building B. It'll be part of that.
I, I was just curious if it could be implemented, you know, earlier, but it doesn't sound, doesn't sound like it, no.
No, yeah. I mean, with the construction of Building B, you don't want people walking through there.
Anything else from Mr. Laney's report? You were on Page Seven.
The only thing is the cross-access easel, oh, for the walkway connection, we already talked about that. Both of the applicant and bearers have signed off on it. It just, you know, is a form acceptable to the Borough. So they're ready to build it upon approval, as part of the overall process.
Those are my only questions right now.
Mr. Ryden?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Keller answered all the comments in my December 30th report, this testimony, and the follow-up reviewing report. I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Maltz?
Mr. Keller answered all my comments. I had a brief letter this time, he filled it, it was very extensive. This was, a lot of it was taken care of in Phase One, but we had the overall review of the entire project. So a lot of the comments that normally would have, would have taken care of in that earlier phase, but he responded as outstanding, so I have no more comments.
Okay. Planning Board, any questions? We're going to revisit the signs more?
Yeah, the architect will show you, exhibit seven will explain how they got wider. You'll see that. And then I'll come back and do planning proofs.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I have a couple questions. I know I saw it on the plans. Can you show me there where the crosswalks are and which are the raised crosswalks?
We have...
You're referring to A2 now, right?
Yeah. So we have a raised crosswalk at Building A in Phase One. Get back on A1 now. Back on, yeah, A1, thank you. We will have a raised crosswalk on the boulevard, generally in the northern part of this lot, but since it, the boulevard doesn't go through, we're not going to do that until we come in for another phase. So at this point, we have one raised crosswalk. The crosswalks are, we have a crosswalk across the shared driveway, where the sidewalk connects from Building A to Stop &amp; Shop. We have a crosswalk on our, what we call Road C. Two at the corner, at Building A and Building B. One in front of Building B, which leads to the sidewalk that runs down the island in the parking area. We have another pair of crosswalks off the northeast corner of... We have another pair of crosswalks off the northeast corner of Building B. The one across Road B connects to a sidewalk that comes up to the area of the helipad, which will then, in a future phase, will continue in a northernly direction.
And when you had been here previously and got the approval for the overall site plan, Phase Two was going to be all of the rest of the buildings, and now it is not.
Correct.
And you had talked about maybe making a driveway from the current driveway on Johnson Road, and you were going to sort of put, you know, whatever.
We're going to make it more convenient for somebody to come in the existing driveway and get over to Building A.
Correct. But we're not doing that now. I mean, you can't-
We may in an interim stage, depends on the timing of this and of Building B, and also, you know, we have to manage, I mean, this is an active site. I mean, there's people who work in sixteen twenty-five, they require parking. You know, we haven't gotten into the details of how we're going to stage construction right now. The focus is on reconstraining Building A and building the parking lot. And, you know, once we have that in place, you know, then we will have, you know, depending on our timing to get this building fully approved, will guide how we create some sort of potentially interim, internal circulation.
So, when this is being done, when you start construction on-
B.
Okay. And it's under construction, is there going to be a way to get from Johnson Road to Stop &amp; Shop?
Yeah, we're going to have to maintain that access.
Okay.
It may not be, well, it's not exactly convenient today-
Well, because of the car holes.
... because you have to go in and go left and go down and come up and over and, but we will, we will be maintaining that access. We don't have the details of having a lot.
Right, right. But somehow we'll be able to get around that block and get that, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you just take the microphone? Okay.
So, that was one of my questions to Eric. Did you move that southernly driveway on Johnson Road this week?
Yes.
Which way did it go?
It went south.
South, right?
Yeah, the existing driveway.
Do I just have that construction, people can use that southernly driveway to get to sixteen twenty-five and go through the active site? Are any businesses, right, whatever's open over there?
The existing driveway, it actually is generally in kind of that same location. We're going to have to work out how it's going to work out.
Could you, could you use, well, you're not going to construct the northernly driveway either, right?
No, because right now, you know, we have to look, we'll look at that.
The trash container for Phase Two, what size is that, and how many businesses do you have in that building that will be utilizing it?
So, it's the same size as we had under the original plan. There are nine retail tenant spaces, plus the Cube Smart. That dumpster is not available to Cube Smart's customers, only to the employees.
So, you're about to recycle it for their box, and what, our customers have to take those with them?
Yes. The customers are not allowed to use the dumpsters, and that will be in the lease agreements with Cube Smart. So, that enclosure is ten by twenty, so it's a refuse and it's also recycling, so.
Do you know what, was that eight yards, six yards containers, do you know?
It's probably six or an eight, you know.
We discussed the timing of the parking lot lighting back when, I believe, that's still in effect, dimming of this one, so it's not being used.
Right. We can-
Cut out all the remaining stuff.
We had security landing lights that would stay on twenty-four seven, well, dusk to dawn, not twenty-four seven. Dusk to dawn, those were marked on the plans, we can do the same for this. You know, we would probably have two or three at the rear of the building. There is, as you can see on Exhibit A two, a significant buffer between Building B and Signature Place. Most of Building B is by the parking lot in the amenity area, so it's not by the one-manner building that's in the northwest corner of the Signature Place, so.
The size of the third sign for Cube Smart, maybe Mr. Dietz thought, is that just a, I'll say, advertising sign, or is it just more of a directional size type sign?
It's more of a directional sign.
Just their name.
Yeah, just-
Says Cube Smart. Yeah, I saw it on the rendering book.
We'll get, we'll see if it's with this. Yeah, I don't have, because the size of the sign is conforming, it's just the fact that we're asking for a third sign, so.
Mr. Dietz, we're talking about-
The driveway, the rear access driveway that goes behind the fifteen fifteen building, don't they?
Yes.
Comes out on Johnson Road. Can you point that out on the, on the coming map?
It is generally by the D in Johnson Road on Exhibit A two.
Now, you're aware that the borough has an agreement for Symphony fifteen fifteen building in Hanover Township without traffic counts coming out of the back of that building onto Johnson Road?
I was not aware of the specifics of it, but I know that there's been discussions among the municipalities about the use of that driveway.
So, there is an agreement in place already now for the, you know, people coming through and not doing your turn and coming out to Johnson Road. There's different phases of that, and maybe we should give a topic about.
I'd appreciate that, if you could, Eric.
With Symphony Hanover Township, Morris Plains, and the fifteen fifteen. And if the traffic count goes up, different relief measures are put in place depending on, including blocking that, you know, blocking the middle of Johnson Road. Just one final question that I have, I think you touched on it with Bill, is the timing of this in Phase One.
So, Phase One will be starting construction immediately. We are probably, you know, a number of months away from starting this, subject to obviously board approval and outside agency approvals, going through resolution, developer's agreement.
It could be certain things.
There may be some overlap between it, yes. And we have to manage that. I mean, remember, the applicant and other parties that are, you know, tied deeply into this site have businesses to run, so. And they're going to be attracting tenants to Building A, so, you know, we have to manage that and get into those details.
And I got to ask, why this slight signage change now when we didn't do that previously?
I think Mr. Dietz can answer better, it's with the lettering and the way it looks. He'll go run through that for you.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Just, thank you very much for the presentation, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, you were talking about the basins-
Yes.
-that moved. Can I ask, what was the size of the original basin? And then, the new basin is being enlarged, is it comparable? Or is it the same, actually, is the question?
It's not necessarily a one-to-one, you know, relationship. It's a matter of surface area of the bottom, and then also the volume. I don't know the specifics of the area. Obviously, the, just by inspection, looking at A one, the area of Basin One plus Basin Two does not equal Basin, the new Basin One, but it has the same performance in that we still manage to meet the reductions associated with the two-ten and hundred-year storms, so. But it is, you know, not necessarily, just because we had this much area before, that we need to have that much area in the redesign. So, it's a matter of volume, how we control the rate of water leaving the site. So, you know, you can't just go, oh, A and B equals C, and, you know.
Correct. I understand, it's a matter of volume.
Correct.
It holds the appropriate amount of volume.
Correct.
Okay, understood, thank you. The, just, can you just go over for me, since we're not doing the Route Ten exit currently, how would the traffic flow from north to south or south to north? Sorry, from two oh two to Johnson Road, how would, how would the traffic go through there?
So, on this plan before you, on Exhibit A two, we maintain the shared driveway at Littleton Road. So, say somebody is going through, they would come in here, they would have multiple opportunities to get to Building A. As they come down, this driveway that will eventually be part of the circulation system for the rest of the center, just goes to the sixteen twenty-five loading area. So, it's really a dead end. You would then come down Road C, and then you would have the ability to make a left on the Road B and go out Johnson Road. And vice versa, if you're on Johnson Road, you would have to come through that one. So, the driveway on Johnson Road provides access to Building B and Building A and the parking lot.
Okay. So, one concern I have when those are both built, right, is, because people do it currently today, they use it as a cut-through, right? Now, it's hard to do it, but with what you just explained, it'd be easier for people to go through that. So, is there any thought given to that?
Well, I mean, we had a lot of discussion on it, and I know, Mr. Houston, you weren't here for our first go-around on this. We did talk about it, we did, you know, we have stop signs, so when you come in, you have to stop at this intersection and make a right. So, it is not a straight shot through. You'll also, as the center develops, will have the activity of the various parking lots, which will serve as traffic calming. And, you know, make it, I mean, right now, that whole southern parking lot is basically empty.
Right.
You know, so, and you're going to have pedestrian activity in here and things like that, so, you know, the design of it is intended, yes, we didn't want to make it too circuitous, because we also want to serve our customers, but serving our customers will also tend to reduce the, you know, the likelihood of cut-through traffic. You can't stop it.
No, understood. In the resolution, it stated that you're removing one hundred and eighty-three trees and planted back sixty-six trees and twenty-three hundred deciduous trees and evergreen shrubs. You mentioned before about, so you said something about how they only want shrubs and not trees?
Well, the original, JCPNO will not allow us to put trees in the power line easement, which is, I think, two hundred feet wide. So, we never had trees in there. So, that overall plan is really not changing the number of plant material that we're putting on the site from, you know, there is some change with the elimination of Basin B and Basin Two, but everything else will be planted as, I mean, the intent is to plant it as it was originally approved. You know, the, so, we're not materially changing that. We never had trees within the easement, anyplace.
Understood. Is there, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Ryden or Ms. Laney, but as far as the actual trees that are, anything that's being planted back, was there any, anything about it being native to the area, or is it just general bushes and trees?
No, we favor native plant material. You can't always get native plant material that meets the overall goal of landscaping a commercial site. We do use non-native materials, but we don't use any invasive materials. The plant materials that we had on the overall plan, we haven't changed those. Some of the numbers may have changed, but the same plant material is carrying through.
Okay. That's all the questions I had, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just a couple of points of clarification here. And I'm curious, how big is that hot box that's being put on the north? Is it tall, is it wide?
It's about six feet tall, about eight feet wide. And it can be, and I'm trying to get confirmation, it could be as much as twenty-six feet long. It's got a meter in it, it's got check valves, it's got backflow preventers, there's a lot of pieces of equipment in there, and you need to get access to it. So, the one on the, by, for Building B, we've placed the narrow side facing Johnson Road, and there is also some slope there, so we're hoping, you know, between, it's going to be set above the road, and that we can, we will plant shrubs and whatever to screen it along Johnson Road. And the one out at, for Building A, unless you're in the parking lot, you're probably never going to see it.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding the conservation easement on Basin One, we talked about large, I'm sorry, Basin One.
Yes, okay.
The basin as it exists, as it will exist.
Right.
And when we talked about the plantings, we kind of talked a little bit about it. Obviously, it's not the same number of plantings, but we want to just ensure that we're not reducing the number of plantings on the overall site because we've, because you guys had to make some changes. So, where, maybe you couldn't plant as many, are we still maintaining the number of plantings?
The, I mean, we had plantings in Basin Two, which, if they had allowed us to keep the basin, they probably wouldn't have allowed us to put trees in there, it would have all been shrubs. So, we may have a few less shrubs in that area, just, you know, we will. I mean, we can look, I'll look at the total number.
Okay.
You know, if the board's concerned, we can probably put some additional shrub material in the area. We can't get too close to the tower, that's another-
Yeah.
-you know, touchy point with Jersey Central. And the gas main is someplace to the south of the helipad, and we can't plant anything in there, anything except grass in areas, but, so, but we can look at areas, you know, that are not in either of those.
Got it. Okay. And then, I, just another, I know we're going to talk about signage, so I don't have questions about that, but in Ms. Laney's comments, I think, there was a comment about including how the operator prevents illegal and or dangerous- about including how the operator prevents illegal and or dangerous substances from being stored on-site. I know you mentioned there's a lease, and then some of the other stuff with the lease, but I don't know that, I might have missed it, I'm not sure you touched on that element.
Well, you know, there, it's in the lease, they get caught with something in there. I mean, this goes to any self-storage facility, um, you know, there, they have access to their units, they bring in something illegal and the operator doesn't know. They, you know, there's no way to police it, you know, they are not an enforcement agency other than if it's found, their lease is terminated, and they're out.
But there are cameras that'll monitor who comes and goes.
Yes, I mean, you know, somebody's wheeling something down, and it's clearly something that shouldn't be in there, that, that, it's caught on camera, the, the videos, um, I believe are maintained for, here, for 30 days. So, they would have time to review those, uh, camera logs.
And those, sorry, those cameras are maintained by Cube Smart or by an outside service?
Well, Cube Smart would control it, whether they contract that out, I don't, I don't know the details of it, but they're Cube Smart managed, uh, security cameras.
And then one last question, 'cause I can't remember this. Do we program out construction vehicles entering and exiting the site, do we limit? Was there a limitation that they're just coming down Johnson, or are they coming off of 202? I couldn't, I can't remember.
I don't recall. I think everything has to come in off of 10.
Yeah.
Probably in a developer's agreement, I don't know that it was in... They're not supposed to use Mount Bardeus.
Okay.
Go out, out of the site, make a right.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was in there.
To 10, to Johnson Road.
I think that's in the resolution.
Yeah, okay. That's it for me.
I don't, it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other remaining question I have is, you mentioned no overnight access, how is that, how is that prevented? Is there...
Well, it, it's, it's...
A lockout?
Yeah, it's a lockout.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it, it's either a keypad or a fob or something, and the system won't allow access between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. You can go there and punch in your code, it, it's not gonna let you in.
And you touched on trash that would come out of Cube Smart, where does the trash go?
Well, Cube Smart's trash, what the office generates would go into the dumpster. The customers have to take it away with them. That's part of the lease agreement, so if they bring in a box and, you know, uh, you know, they have to take that box home with them. They can't throw, you know, they have no access to the dumpster.
Or if they're cleaning out their...
Right, right, yeah. That's probably a better example, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I, I do, I have a couple of other questions now. The, the pathway that's going over the signature place...
The walkway.
Is it sort of where they've made a pathway?
Yeah.
It's separate.
Yeah, it's separate.
Is, is there an incline, and how wide is it?
It's, uh, five feet, I think it's five feet wide. We picked that location because from what I understand, I never did see the existing one, but it kind of like cuts through the woods and it, and it goes up a slope.
Yeah.
Um, we picked this location because it's relatively flat.
Okay.
And, uh, and we have a note on the plans that it is to be, um, you know, field-adjusted to minimize disturbance of trees and to maintain less than a 5% running slope. But I, I believe it is five feet and wide.
And, and one other thing, that, and, and I know we discussed this at the prior application and, and approval, but we talked about speed bumps, and you say that they don't generally put them internal in parking lots for, you know, retail. I just want to make this, make mention of this. Years ago, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with the site, but the, uh, Prior Cliff Commons, that place was a nightmare, okay? It was just a nightmare, and at Christmas, it was horrible. When they redid that whole development there, um, they put in speed bumps, they put in stop signs all over the place, they put in rumble strips and everything else. Let's just leave that open for now, because that place is, runs like perfect, okay? There's no backups, no nothing. Let's just keep it in mind.
We think we can certainly do that, obviously.
We drive around there and see what they did, I mean, they made it...
I, I go there often enough, my, my office is up here on Campus Drive, you know, actually, and many years ago, I reviewed some of the past applications, I sat where Mr. Waltz is sitting now, and reviewed some applications many years ago for what is now Prior Cliff Commons. So, I know, I know the site pretty well.
And, and it's, it just runs so smoothly now, and, uh, you know, some of those speed bumps are pretty tough, but it, it works, so, maybe at some point, we may have to bring that up again.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay. Pardon me?
Which site would you prefer to do?
The Prior Cliff Commons, the Kohl Shopping Center?
Okay.
Yeah, you, you drive around there, I mean, they've made it difficult to, to, um, disobey or not to stop, and, uh, they've made four-way stops and things like that, so, yeah. I, I don't know that it's necessary, I'm just saying, let's...
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, 'cause I reviewed it.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the public if they have any questions on this testimony? No? Okay?
We'll call Mr. Dietz. Answer it. Yeah.
How you doing, Charlie?
How you doing?
We're good.
Yeah, we're so good.
I'm skinny, but not good. My boards are smaller.
Start with the building that we just signed.
He wants to run stuff first.
Care to swear the witness?
Um, please state your name, by your last.
Charles P. Dietz, D-I-E-T-Z.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony and give the scene before the board, to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth to help you out?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz, you're a licensed architect in the state?
I am, so, I'm very much younger than Mr. Keller. So, my license was from 1989, and it's 10,015.
Have you testified before this board and any others in the state?
I have, I'm now a Medicare baby, as of, as of yesterday.
Did you fully with this site, the application?
I, yeah.
Any question regarding his qualification as an architect?
No.
Okay.
So, since Mr. Keller did such a fine job, kind of hitting on all of the kid, big keynotes of building B, and what has changed and what has not changed, I'm just gonna run through, I know there's some new members, and we have an audience this time around, uh, what I'm showing you.
Put the mark there, check.
Is this one on the right, is the existing rendering that we showed you when we got our original approval. Uh, it's actually A12, 12924.
Oh, let's mark this as a form of this application, this is the rendering that the board saw about a year ago.
A year ago, correct. Basically, what I'm showing you is that all the existing materials, colors, height, footprint are exactly the change, the big difference, and whatever you want to call, this is my updated rendering.
Yeah, let's call it A5, this is the current rendering, correct?
A5. One, two...
And this reflects, puts on, on file with the board in terms of the, the design?
Yeah, this is just a color version of the black and white elevations that we submitted as part of our package.
Perfect.
And as you can see, the biggest change is we've highlighted, and we've bent the development and the design of the plaza, the lattice sign and clock tower that sits in the plaza. As Mr. Keller stated when I first looked at this plan, and spoke to the applicant and the subordinate here, this plaza basically sits just to the east of the main boulevard that comes in from Route 10.
When it comes in from Route 10.
When it comes in from Route 10 someday. Uh, and when we had this indentation and created this plaza, I thought it would be a great focal point for people as they come in the main boulevard, to have a destination at the end, have the name of the center on the clock tower as an identifying feature. And Mr. Keller stated that, it's a little kind of funky because of the view, but as we talked about, the building is about three and a half feet taller on all sides around this plaza, so you will not see to the east, to the west, or to the south, the clock face or a tower or signage anywhere else unless you're standing right in front of it, uh, on the property. So, the materials and everything are all the same, so I just wanted to show everybody that this is, in reality, I don't know why the rendering came out a little different. This color at the stone, we basically have three main materials, uh, thin stone, like a cast stone, with the score lines will be on the upper two floors. We have a very rustic brick material for the main face of the buildings at the lower elevations, and then we have these, uh, beautiful windows that are designed to be, to match the turn-of-the-century look, uh, tall windows, large mullions between them, individual divided lights like you would have found, again, at the turn of the century. That was the applicant's desire. We have some decorative osconces at the top to provide some lighting. Uh, in the nighttime, again, they're just a glow fixture, they do not add any intensity to the foot candle and the overall lumens that are on the site, they're there for decoration, and a little bit flow onto the sidewalks. Again, we have structural steel canopies that are tied back with cables back to the building, reminiscent of, if you're familiar in New York City, the Meatpacking District.
Yeah.
Uh, these are very large structural steel canopies, again, that go with the style and the phase and the, the look we're trying to achieve. Uh, they will have a finished soffit and downlighting that'll just shine down onto the sidewalk. Below these canopies, not only decorative, but they supply each of the tenant spaces and their doors, a little bit of cover they project out five feet off the building, so you have time, either put your jacket on, take it off, pull your umbrella down, put your umbrella up as you enter and exit, uh, the plaza. And again, the enhancements in the plazas, uh, not even knowing who the tenants are other than the Cube Smart, we've set up areas for some of the landscaping to be prominent there and just some outdoor tables and chairs when the weather is nice. And again, that's just on the, uh, the north face facing out to the rest of the shopping center. And I'm gonna do this pretty much all my exhibits kind of side-by-side.
Pick them from next one.
Uh, the black and white. Yeah. Uh, no.
Is this the floor plan now?
Yeah, so this is what was submitted to the board, again, we're proposing a maximum...
This would be, this is the same plan the board has?
Yes, this is not really a new exhibit, it's exactly what we submitted as part of our 12.
Market Andy, it's the same plan you have, but...
The 12 sheets that you have, A1 through A12. But again, I just wanted to show everybody that wasn't here the last time. Again, really the only expanded, uh, design work we've done, we have the nine tenants shown across, could be less.
That's all first floor, correct?
All first floor, what we're proposing with Cube Smart is now that they've been, uh, basically brought on board, they worked with us to develop a layout. So, what Mr. Keller talked about, it worked out perfectly, you have some side parking that actually is adjacent to the main door, to the office area, to the Cube Smart where the two, well, the two employees will be, so you can park here, that's where the third sign, that'll show you what elevation's gonna be, you walk in, take care of any paperwork, you go through the rental process to try to rent some of their, uh, their storage spaces. When you come in to actually work and use your storage spaces, you'll drive around the back, you have two spots, if you have a U-Haul, you have a van, you have a pickup truck, you can use these spaces to unload, see, like loading dock, or it's covered, yeah, it's covered. Uh, and then there's a door at this end that you use your key fob, come in, either go up a ramp or stairs, come into this piece, there are a few cubes that they will rent on the first floor, behind the office area, and then they have the two main freight elevators, that's what will take you up to the second and third floors, because Cube Smart will take the entire footprint of this building, whereas on the first floor, they just occupy this portion of the building, when you get to two and three, they will occupy the entire...
Right, so retail is just on the first floor, just on the first floor, right?
So, again, working with Cube Smart and their team, based on the dimensions of the building...
And these are the same plans on file with the board?
Correct. We have extra sheets because of your ordinance, completion review that didn't allow us to have these planned at a 16 scale, so you can see we blew these up to A scale. But again, working with Cube Smart, this is the left half, the side of Cube Smart, each of these lines repare- represent a storage unit, could be 10 by 10, 10 by 15, 10 by 20, 5 by 10. They worked out to get the numbers that Mr. Keller spoke about, I believe it was around 460 units. So, again, once you have access, you can take the freight elevators up, or you can take the stairs, there's two sets of stairs, uh, and take you into your space, either on the second or the third floor. Again, gives you an idea.
And what's this?
This is A5 of the set, all this, these are the 12 sheets that you were submitted with. So, basically shows our architectural footprint, our windows, and then we've inserted a Cube Smart layout that works for them, uh, in their standard prototype set. This takes you up to the third floor, left, third floor, right, and then we'll get to the elevation, and we'll show you the other. So, previously, we had...
Let's mark this.
This is A8, it used to just say self-storage. We changed the sign, same size, same everything, we just wrote the word Cube Smart Self-Storage versus just saying stuff, self-storage previously. But we've kept the box, the same square footage, it meets the ordinance, uh, so we haven't proposed anything different other than actually putting the name of the tenant on the building. So, this is the parking lot facade, so they're asking for, they'd like to see one sign on this section of the building, which, this is a little smaller version, this is the blow-up. Then they're asking for the second sign because we face two roadways, so they're proposing... The second sign on Johnson Road, again, be previously it said self-storage, now it says Cube Smart Self-Storage, it's at the uppermost portion of the roof there. Uh, so those are the two signs that we're entitled to have by ordinance.
Those are permitted by ordinance?
Those are both permitted by ordinance for number and square footage. And then lastly, once we had Cube Ordnance, Cube Smart see and approve where we had located their office, they felt because of no signage on that side of the building, this is the side that faces building A, they asked that they could put their name, uh, just on the little canopy over their doorway, so people know if they're parking in these stalls adjacent to the building, they know where to come in, and someone asked, that's a 28-square-foot sign, and we are actually allowed, in the area, 22, 2 and 1/2 percent of the facade, or 100 square feet, we're allowed, we're asking for 28 square feet. So, the variance is the number of signs for this tenant, but the area, you can see, is very small and limited compared to, technically, if that sign was allowed, we'd be able to have a 100-square-foot sign there. We're only proposing 28, it would be internal letters, and like our retail, it would just sit on top of the canopy, and allows their patrons to identify where the office is, park in those stalls, easy access in and out, uh, before they actually rent one of the units. So, that's really the only changes architecturally, the building B for my initial, the layout advancement of the cubes, the third sign for Cube Smart, and then having that lattice sign and plaza details in the area. Otherwise, everything else about this building is identical to what was previously approved during the preliminary approval stage for the other phases that weren't, uh, building A.
Let's talk about some signs.
Let's talk about the signs. Let's put this one.
We need to mark this.
This we didn't mark because it was part of our original set, which had 33 sheets. So, whatever our black and white set, the first time, whatever that number was, this is right from that set, this was the last sheet in the set. And what that showed is the taller freestanding sign on Route 10, which we met the height and area requirements originally. This was the freestanding sign on Route 202. On the original approval, we met the height and we met the area requirements.
So, this is from their prior approval?
This is from the prior approval.
So, we should mark this, Mr. Brewer?
So, we go like this, A...
Six?
Six.
Six? So, this is the previously approved sign, essentially, the two sides?
Right, and these are both conforming freestanding sizes, both in area and in height.
And location, they were...
And location.
And this is also from the... And this is also from the prior...
And this was sheet A32, correct, from the original approval?
So mark this as A7, these are the previously approved monument signs, correct?
Previously approved monument signs, which are also...
And I note they say Highline Marketplace, which is the original name.
Right, which was the original name. So the signage is gonna be replaced in the same area, although it's gonna say crossings at 10. So since when we spoke, and what we were hoping the applicant would do as we move forward with the rest of the project, was advancements in collecting tenants to occupy the buildings and other features. So the applicant, being we knew we had building A approval, we were coming in for building B, and then we're gonna be able to fabricate the two signs, the freestanding sign or the monument sign on Johnson Road, and the freestanding sign on Route 202. I gave them a recommendation and they hired an official sign manufacturer, who will take the design that we've come up with, they'll detail it with specific drawings, make sure they can build the sign, they can get the lettering to work, and then they'll build all the sign cabinets for the future tenants. What happened is when they got into the fabrication details, they realized the mesh, or this screening, decorative screening that we proposed, was not, mostly on the vertical, was not wide enough to basically handle the font, the stroke, the curvature of all the letters. It couldn't fit. Signs are basically built by, really thin letters are difficult to make metal sign cabinets. You know, strange things like that, they need a certain dimension as a minimum to be fabricated and to function. So they basically came back to us and said, can you increase the width of both the pylon sign and the monument sign in this east-west access to allow us to get the proper sized letters for the crossings at 10 with the proper font and the letter stroke and the size so it's legible and they can manufacture it? So we basically got that dimension. It was literally anywhere from six to nine inches is all we've increased the width of these signs. And it was sheer to meet the manufacturer's specifications to allow us to have this design, this style, lettering and font to make it work. So what I'll give you A8 is now actually we've had, we've advanced it. We've had our renderer look at this, and she has rendered the signs for what we're proposing with the proper and wider mesh areas for these signs with the crossings at 10, so we call this A8.
Correct.
So basically, the height of the signs stayed the same. We're allowed 20 feet on Route 202, we're proposing 20 feet. We wrote, we had an area... We were allowed 200 square foot of signage, both on Route 10 and on Route 202. We still are under that requirement. But we went from, I think, 125 square foot signage area to about 141.33 square feet, which is still less than the 200 square feet that were allowed. So we're not asking for a variance for the pylon sign. What happened is we increased the width of the monument sign on both Johnson Road, the two on Johnson Road and the one on Route 10, and we increased that between six and nine inches. And that took us all correct, Mr. Keller. We were allowed 12 feet in height on Johnson, 15 feet in height on Route 10. We're maintaining both of those. But the previous areas were under 75 square feet for the Johnson Road. We are now 75.66. Mr. Keller mentioned it was 76.66. So it's actually 75.66. And I know people are gonna look at that and say, well, why couldn't you conform? Again, everything here has a proportion on how you can make it. And the key was, you know, getting these mesh areas to be a little bit larger. We were close, but just to get the fabrication to allow these signs to have that certain style font that the applicant went and hired a marketing company to come up with the logo and the font. And then having the sign manufacturer the ability to fabricate these letters and be structurally sound and have a plexi face. The lighting would be all internal, you will see the lighting source. And that's why we had to create the extra width. So for the monument signs, both on Route 10 and on Johnson Road, the height meets the ordinance just like it did before, except the Johnson Road sign is 0.66 square feet larger in sign area than the one on Route 10 is a little bigger than that. That exceeds the 125 square feet. So all in all, I think it's de minimis. The applicant really likes the design and the look. It's in, consistent with the exposed steel and some of the architectural features that are shown in the renderings on our buildings. The black mullions, the black canopies, things like that, the mesh. These all tie into the overall architecture that we've set up for the entire complex. I think it's gonna be unique. Instead of what you see today, a lot of times you'll see just a white blank plexi face. And some tenant comes and they just stick their color on there and call it a day. I don't really like doing that as much, so I think giving them the black plexi face, having put just the push-through colors, so if your sign is gonna be green, or red, or yellow, or white, the push-through letter would basically be that color that you see here. But the rest would be consistent, so you don't have that mishmash. If you go up and down Route 10 and you look at most of the pylon, you see a big red panel, a blue panel, a white panel, a beige panel, a green panel, and it's all over the place. There's no control because the landlord just provided a blank, clear, white, kinda milky white plexi face for the tenants to put their color on. I think this allows the applicant to maintain the integrity of the design. And even if there's not a tenant there, you know, we'll have that black face with the white stripe on it. It'll be consistent, and then we can control basically the font and the style and everything for the individual tenants as they come.
What about the lighting on these signs?
Again, these are standard signs, so these wouldn't be plexi faced, so they'll be internally illuminated with LED. You will not see the light source. And then what they do now is they take these plexi faces and they basically router laser cut it on a computer to whatever font and whatever name the tenant gives them to put on there. And then they just put the plexi face, push through that laser cut, and then they're backlit through the LEDs that will run either horizontally or vertically, full height of the sign cabinet behind it. And again, the world of signage in the last ten years has changed dramatically, both for facades and freestanding signs because of the use of the LED. They don't get the big sign box anymore. They don't need the raceway to run conduit for all the electric. Everything is LED, smaller cables, smaller wire. Hence, you can, you do so much more, it lasts longer and it's more efficient, both energy and with coloration. So really, the color change would be whatever plexi face pushed through plastic gets put into the sign cabinet. The light would all probably be just a white light behind it. But if the grocer wants green, they give him green plexi cutout and they do it in the push-through. So I think, and these are two-sided signs, so the trick we learned again from the manufacturer, because we found one that he did in Pennsylvania. They basically have, they route out a metal plate that sits exactly like the style of these letters, that actually gets mounted to the mesh first so that you can have the identical crossings at 10 on both sides and you're not seeing both letters in reverse, because that would be a little confusing and a little deceiving. So we found a project that they actually worked on just over the river in Pennsylvania, and they gave us the secret. They're basically gonna cut out a flat plate that'll sit behind all these letters. So that blocks either view from seeing through the reverse letter. The signed letters get mounted to that, but you still get the wire mesh and the clear look, which I think is cool. But it allows you to have the signs going in opposite directions on both sides. And this architecture, this fabrication will be the same for all the signs on the property. So that's really the big change. It came down to what could the sign company actually fabricate? And what I had shown you a year ago for the name of the sign, whether we still kept it Highline Marketplace or we changed it to Crossing at 10, we just couldn't fit those letters in a structurally sound package that they could fabricate and put their name on. So that's why we had to change the size of the sign.
Any questions, Mr. Dees?
Those are the only changes.
Professionals, Ms. Laney?
Could you describe the CubeSmart signs? Are they individual letters?
Yes.
Plastic, are they internally illuminated?
They're internally illuminated, channeled letters. And just as I had presented previously, when I called them just self-storage, that's what they're proposing. They have the red plexi face, so they'll be internally illuminated, and they'll get mounted. Again, they don't need the big raceway behind it because they're LED, very thin raceway, or they'll just punch through the wall. And, and actually, now that I thought of it, I do have to show you one more exhibit. But yeah, all their signs will be individual channeled letters. And that's what we're proposing for the retailers that sit on top of our canopies on the lower level, both on this building and on building A. Well, I didn't show you the last effect, and I'm sure someone might, would have caught this or brought it up. And if you're familiar with either CubeSmart or any of the names...
CubeSmart, this would be A9.
This is inherent in most self-storage facilities. You'll see clear windows that allow you to look in to the self-storage. And they'll usually put faux doors on that backside. And if you're CubeSmart, you're gonna have them painted red. If you're the other self-storages, they paint them green. Whoever else is in the market, they do the same thing. I think someone had asked that question previously when I showed that we left a little space. It's not active, the public will not have access to it. There's about three feet of area behind these windows and this wall and the backs of all these units. So what CubeSmart is proposing is just accentuating the tower elements where this would be clear glass. They paint a couple sets of doors, second and third story, in all the towers. So that would be the side tower, this tower, this tower, the one on the return, the one on the return on this side. And they would accentuate highlight, there's no signage. But obviously, when people see red, they know it's CubeSmart. And then these windows, they would just paint like a neutral color of the wall behind this, and you would have no accent. And there's no lighting back there, so you really wouldn't see it. This, they'll probably put some LED lights on the ceiling, just so you'll see this whenever the facade, whenever the store is open and the other signs are on. That's the only time that these would be illuminated. So that's the only other thing that changed. We kept asking them when we presented the last time, they couldn't come up with a logical answer for us. We thought this is what they might do. And in fact, once we got them focused, this is what they came back with, just to accentuate their look. Each of the brick towers for two and three floors, they would like to paint the backs as faux doors in the red motif that go along with their sign.
So that really, that was my question here written down?
I think you and I, we had talked last time. Because people were concerned, because this was like a balcony, so we put a guardrail. But no public will actually ever have access behind these. It was meant to, if I had to get in a roof drain, or if I have to get to a light fixture, there'll be a way to get a worker, a management person out here. And then again, there'll probably be a locked door. And if CubeSmart has to have access behind there to do anything, they'll have access. But otherwise, it'll be sealed off, closed, locked, and the general public won't have access to that. So that's the only other thing that they enhanced on my elevation. Which I think goes nicely, as I said, if you go to any of the self-storage units around the state of New Jersey, almost everyone has something like this and just their brand and their color.
That's all I have, that's it.
I have another question, sorry. So is that just facing north?
No, it would be on the, it would be on the three sides. So this is facing north out to the parking lot.
Okay.
So if you look at my A8, tower, tower, double tower. So this is all facing north to the parking lot. So it would just be at these four features there. And then when you turn in the corner, this is Johnson Road, and the other one is facing building A. They would just propose it there. And then they didn't do a color version, but that's what they told us they'd like to do. Only where we have these brick tower features, that would be the only place they'd show us.
Because what I would suggest is that you not put it on the south side. Any, any portion that might be facing south.
Towards Signature Place.
Towards Signature Place.
Well, no, we don't have any tower elements on the back of the building.
So it wouldn't be?
Nothing would be done, no windows, there's nothing on the south, the south.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That elevation is in your package. That has no windows, no visibility.
Perfect.
So just one on Johnson, one on facing building A, and the rest face out to the north on the parking lot.
Okay, and then with the building A, you had agreed to do, and I think you're showing it here, with the retail buildings, that they, the signs be, you know, obviously, you're gonna have different brands, different, whatever, operators, but that they're building mounted, that they be sort of roughly the same size, hung at the same height?
Yes, these canopies are all set at the same height all the way across, right at the top of storefront, and then the signs will sit on top of that.
Okay, and, and they could all be channeled letters?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
There'll be different ways, because we have a shopping center in Pahramas up by the, the Gulf. Right before you get on the Parkway on 17 South, right before you get on the Parkway, there's one of the big Gulf PGA stores. Our shopping center is just to the west of that, and we have a similar design with the canopies. And it came out really nice. Everybody did it a little differently. We have a Jersey Mike's, we have a dry goods store, we have a restaurant, we have a guy like a Jer... Each one saw it a different way, but they all had to follow the details of mounting their sign. And again, with the innovation of LED, so thin wiring, they can actually run it behind in the canopy structure and come up into their channeled letters and create their signage that way clean and you don't even see the wires.
Okay, um, I think those are my other questions right now.
Mr. Moss, anything? Board members, any questions? Mr. Ogden?
I'm pleased. Really, I like the design of both the building and thought it went into where everything was gonna be placed. I'm very happy to hear the sign increase is not as tall as I first thought it would.
Yeah, I know that was critical both to the town and what we're allowed to do. So I thought, you know, six to nine inches in a sign that's as big as they are, that's allowed to be, is so de minimis, you wouldn't even notice the difference. But it's now allowing the manufacturer to make a, a standard set of letters that'll be durable, it'll last, it'll look good. He doesn't have to jump through a lot of different hoops to try to make this crazy font not work, to try to stay within the parameters of what we previously got approved.
The only thing I want to keep top of mind is making sure traffic is, don't see that as a throughway. I know you've done a lot to keep it disruptive, and that's, as long as that's continued thinking, that's gonna be great.
And I've worked and I've recommended this sign manufacturer that is gonna be on this job. He's probably done my last 10 shopping centers, so I've been fortunate enough to get in and have a lot of jobs. Every sign's been different, they do a great job, they're top quality. They just merged with actually a bigger company. So now they have an office in Mountainside versus they used to be in South Jersey only. And they've expanded their role in design as well as manufacturing. But I've worked with them for the past 30 or years in some form of what they are today. They changed the name, but they've been on a lot of my big projects and all my clients have been very happy with the end result. And that's why I was able to make the recommendation to the applicant, knowing I'd like to say, there's something to be finished on this project when we're done.
A point of clarification. I don't recall on the prior freestanding signs that the left-hand side was illuminated. Was it always illuminated? I don't recall it being illuminated.
All signs, the pylons, yes, the name of the center was in the vertical mesh. It was the monument sign that we had, just the name of the center on the top. So both the applicant and the sign vendor decided they liked the look of having the vertical sign on the... Although, on the monuments, it's still across the top. The pylon, we have them still verticals. I'm sorry, it's still the same, just the area is bigger.
I just didn't remember it being illuminated before.
So just the letters would be illuminated, correct.
Okay, but it wasn't illuminated before, but...
Yeah, they were, they were still channeled letters that would have had internal illumination. It just said Highline Marketplace. And it says crossings at 10.
And then where there is no, no store there, it's just a black?
It'll be a black blank panel, and when a tenant comes, these will be divider bars. You get a tenant that's either taking a double or a single, they'll work with the sign vendor. They'll get their fonts and their colors, they'll route it out, and they'll give them a new panel. The black, but with the proper letters blind, it could be just white, or it could be red, it could be green, it could be yellow. And then they'll install that for the tenant. And again, the leasing people and the management company will, per their lease, will determine who gets... And again, the leasing people and the management company will, per their lease, will determine who gets what size. Obviously, the bigger tenants want the bigger. So obviously, if you get the grocer, even though self-storage has more square footage, he's really not the draw to the shopping center when you look at the overall design. The grocer would be the draw. So we're proposing to give them the largest panel at the top. And as you can see, CubeSmart's kind of somewhere in the middle, even though they have the most square footage on the property. They're not really the destination that is drawing more people to the center than some of the other tenants will be. But that, that's what we'll dictate. Again, the square footage doesn't matter, because we're basically calculating the overall area of the entire block of signage. So it doesn't matter if they had less signs and they double all these up somewhere. As long as they stay within the footprint and that overall square footage, they kind of have free run to do what they need to do. Knowing how many tenants are going to be in the whole center, you know, the landlord's going to keep control of that and dedicate who wants to get what size sign, where they go on the placement of the soft signs or the pylon signs.
Okay. Can you refresh my memory? Did we talk about how late the, the signs are going to be lit?
I think whatever Mr. Keller stated for the hours of light, the center, that's when, so this is dusk to, what do we call it? Dawn to dusk. I think whatever your ordinance is, they'll stay on usually. Most times, the, the lighting on the canopies in my case are laying, stay on to either exactly when they close or an hour after they close the stores. And I'm assuming that's what these signs will do as well. Whenever your ordinance says things have to turn off, they'll all get turned off at the same. And the landlord will control this, so this will be on the landlord panel. So the tenant can't just say, well, I want my one sign on and everybody else is closed. He doesn't have that ability.
Got it.
It's on the landlord panel, and when the landlord says it's going off at 11 o'clock, it's being shut off at 11 o'clock whether you like it or not.
Okay. Shifting gears, just off the signs. Uh, we talked about the loading dock and the mech- the, the, um, the two parking spots in terms of the loading dock.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes those doors can be rather loud, and I know it's kind of backing up to the signature place. Is that?
Well, the doors are not on the outside face of a wall. They're actually inside, within that full depth of 30 feet, give or take.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so the doors are not here.
That's the, that's the back of the building, right?
This is the back of the building, so Signature Place is here. The doors are actually here.
Okay.
So they have enough volume and room in here to absorb any sound on these doors, because they're not at the face of the building. So you'll pull in either headfirst or back in, come in, open the door probably from, once you come inside the building, whether the running out doors or hand chain doors, I'm not sure. Uh, but you'll operate them, but they're a good 20-plus feet back off the face of the building. So they'll absorb some of that sound and talking and noise.
So, so with the truck, the truck with that sitting there?
Yeah, and then the truck and the car, the van, whatever, will sit in that space and then pull out and go in either direction. So it's kind of secure, it's not actually visible, you're not going to have cars and trucks parking anywhere along the back here all waiting to get in and to be turned in. 25, 30 trips a week over that timeframe, which is, you know, so insignificant. It's how they keep a business, which is amazing.
How, how high will that cavity be?
Uh, this is a four-foot platform to get up to the lower dock height. So they might have, they'll probably be either nine or 10-foot doors plus the four feet up. So maybe 13, 14-foot cavity.
And what's the roof above that?
Which is below, again, you have two stories above you. So we set this up to have the second floor at 16 feet. So the second floor starts at 16 feet over the first floor. So these doors will be at least two feet below that.
I guess my head was thinking about acoustics.
Yeah, don't forget, you get two more stories of building on top of you. Right, so you, we can only go no higher than 16, because that's my floor beams are coming across at 16 for the other floors.
Okay, I, my last comment, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it. There's, there's a lot of red. When I look at the design of the buildings, which are very-
That's where it chose a gray brick.
Which is very pretty and it's very sophisticated and all that. And it, to me, that, that's a lot of, of, of red, and so I, I, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I get the illuminated signs, but in those parapits, um, that's a lot.
If I show you the actual brick and it's within the set that I gave you of the toll sheets, there's a snapshot, this brick is not anywhere near the darker, deeper red that we have on Building A. That was intended to be a rich, dark, molded handmade brick. If you look at the physical samples, and I've shown the applicant, all the physical samples are in my office. This has some red in it, and it's a lighter red, and then it has almost like a whitewash to it. We have a couple brick on the site, they were calling, like, they're called, one's like Old London, another one's Old England, I think. And they actually have like a white color built within the red, so it's not going to appear it's much more muted than the other building. And that's predominantly throughout the site, there's only two buildings on the site that have the same dark red brick. That's Building A and Building C, which we're proposing to be the grocer. They have the deep dark, there's no doubt that's red. These, again, the renderer can only do so much, she's doing this all on computer. We give her the samples and she tries her best. But there's actually a fleck through this and a, and a white painted kind of finish along with the lighter red. So I don't think it's even going to come off. When you look at the sign, yeah, that's going to be a painted red, so that's really the only red.
Well, let me qualify my remarks. It's not the brick.
It's in the towers.
It's the, it's the doors on the inside. That's a lot of red all over the building, and I think it, it detracts from the sophistication of the building. But I'll just throw that comment out there and I'll leave it to my colleagues, you know, how everybody else feels about it.
I agree with that, I think it popped up because you don't see any other colors over here.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's, that's accentuating.
It's unpopulated, that's why.
And it's a long building, but this is only the first half. There's a whole nother half of the building that goes away, so there's.
Would the lights illuminating the red be turned off after hours?
Yeah, so again, whatever the hours are, that would all get turned off. At the same time, the signs get turned off and everything else gets turned off. Uh, so if they close at 10 o'clock at night, then everything would be shut down and turned off at that point. So it's hard to see the scale of how long this building is, is really, and the fact that these doors aren't very wide. I mean, these doors are about five feet wide, or maybe 10 feet tall. 40 feet in the air.
So just, just on that point, is that CubeSmart asking for that specifically? Is it a requirement?
That's why I didn't show it previously, that we weren't sure. I actually raised it to the applicant, who raised it to them and said, hey, you probably have more windows like these in your storage facility than you normally would. Normally, you look at these, they have a corner tower and they do their colors only at the corner, and these are all big blank walls. Well, we didn't want the blank wall, we wanted the architecture, the client loved the radial Roman-style windows. So we said to CubeSmart, well, how are you going to resolve this? We want the architecture, the town wants the architecture, but we got a blank wall behind it. So they chose to say, we're just going to paint a neutral wall behind it that you really won't see, but can we just get these featured elements just at the corner towers? Uh, you know, I'd have to ask the applicant if it's part of their lease, but this was a CubeSmart request after we raised the issue to them.
Question on the signage. So what, what's popularly known as the cool shopping center across the street, right? The signage that's over there, right, has the white plexi signs?
Mm-hmm.
And those, I don't know if you've been over there recently, but they're burned out, right? They're, they're black and they're burned, and I'm assuming that's because they're older and they're probably a different type of lighting that's burned out?
Yeah, which amazes me, because technically, they're, they're by the tenant. So you would think, again, that's a store manager, who's got one store probably, and it comes out of his budget if he's got to replace it. I can probably promise you, with the national tenant, they have their area regional people show up, and they find out their sign isn't lit when everybody else is lit. So it was going to be hell to pay for that stuff.
Right, I'm not, I'm not talking about lit or not lit, I'm saying when you look at the sign, right, it actually looks like it's charred on the inside?
Yeah, they probably have the old style, they used to be just fluorescent tubes. Like you see here, that's what you used to put in a sign like this.
Right.
With a ballast. They change color as they get older, they get yellower than the white you first got. Then we got to the fives and the sevens, they were more clear white. All these tubes are gone now, they don't exist in signage. The world has changed, everything's LED. We use your 3,035 Kelvin, which is a beautiful, consistent, constant bright white. The same day it starts, and seven years later, it should be the same brightness or lumens coming out of that fixture.
All right, so we're not going to, excuse me, we're not going to have that problem then?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all the questions I had, thank you.
And when the faces have a color, I think that helps with the diminishing of the plexi. Because clear plexi could deteriorate over time. So if they're there for 10 years and it was just a white plexi, you might start to see the edges age and get a little discoloration. I think when we could have the tenants put their actual colors on there, it allows that face to last longer and you don't see the deterioration as much.
Oh, I have a comment, a few questions, question.
Yeah.
I just have a comment. So after we got the plans with the clock tower, whatever, it happened to be at another shopping place, and they had it, and it really, it drew your attention to it, and it was really an aspect that I thought was, oh wow, it does look really- so I'm just giving you a compliment on that.
Thank you.
It looks good, uh, it's a nice feature that's-
And we saw that when Mr. Keller first laid out the property and we got that boulevard to a line. And I sat many times with the applicant and I kept drawing a line going, I mean, this thing almost dies right in the face of Building B. We were able to get that little plaza creation, and then we said, as you're driving down this boulevard, why don't we have something for them to focus on and see? Never have any tenant names on there, clock at the top, name of the shopping center that really could be done in a tasteful way and an accentuation to the property.
I, I mean, I think it's, it's a very nice design. And I don't mind the red, because I think it's better than orange.
Yeah. You want, you want one there?
Orange and green are the other two manufacturers that compete.
Yeah, so, but I do have a question on A8 of the plans that are dated, 9/23.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we may have gone over this before and I just didn't notice it. But in the middle, that, the section that's in the middle, no, no, in the middle, right there, no, where she, right.
That's our, back behind our plaza.
What are those garage doors for?
To open up in the summertime. If you go to Livingston, I did a small shopping center in Livingston, right on Eisenhower Parkway, it's a coffee shop. And when, again, we have limited number of days in the Northeast that we can have that, but they love it with the patio and the outdoor seating. You can now open it up and you have full indoor-outdoor dining without sitting behind glass like this.
So they're pretty much designated to be restaurants?
Hopefully.
Okay, okay.
I think they feed well to the sense. And at the storefront, and the glass would be all exactly the same glass that's everywhere else.
So the garage doors have glass in them?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And we would not obviously open them in February.
Yeah, no.
They would only open them in November.
Because I didn't know that that's what you planned to have restaurants there.
Where's, where are those glass doors located? Which side of the building?
One here?
North.
One here.
What you put up?
So that's the north face.
What you put up, the original plan, here we go. Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, they're in here.
Because if they're on the opposite side, mosquitoes would be a problem with the trees.
But they just had a Just Salad open up. It has the Aldi's Shopping Center, let me stand right on, right at 10 Eisenhower. I redesigned that whole center, 12 years in the making. But when they put the freestanding coffee shop where the bank used to be, and we have a large plaza area left over simply to this, we said, hey, we've seen when we've traveled the country in warmer weather, if we open up an eight-foot-wide garage door, it gives you that effect of indoor-outdoor seating for maybe the two, three months of the year that we can do it.
I think it's nice, I, I just, I can remember that we talked about it.
And it would be up to the, the store, whoever's in there, to want to open the doors when they see fit to have them open.
I mean, I've seen them convert old gas stations into restaurants and they do the same thing. Yeah, okay, no, I think that-
We've done this on a number, a number of centers around the state.
It's, it's, uh-
Different, we don't get to use them, but three months a year, you go to Texas or Florida, obviously, they can do it all around almost. But I think it's just an extra, a little extra design feature that we gave the applicant to kind of put the Deets stamp on it, if I can say so. I have designed over 250 shopping centers in my 36 years, so. I've kind of been around shopping center. If I hadn't designed them from the scratch, I'd probably renovated them, so.
Well, I think you did a nice job here.
Thank you. You're really exciting, uh, center. Great attention.
Any other questions here?
Any questions from the public?
Hi, Joanne Dugan, 31 Campfield Place. Um, I was just looking at some of the plans online because I couldn't really see from where I was sitting, and, um-
I have to have, you have to take the mirror microphone.
Oh.
Oh, it's back over here. Just sitting in the other room.
And you do have to state your name again?
Yeah, Joanne Dugan, 31 Campfield Place. And I was just saying, I was looking online at some of the plans, because I couldn't see them from where I was seated. And I noticed that, um, the plan, it said there are multiple drive-through opportunities.
That's a leasing marketing thing for the buildings on Phase 3.
Okay.
Not for here.
Okay.
So the other buildings that will go where the 16, they have set up a drive-through in a couple of those.
There could be drive-throughs.
So it's not A or B, it would only lead into other buildings.
I was just wondering if the board thought that would be more appropriate than Campfield than Dayton for McDonald's drive-through. And I would just like to say that I've heard more questions from certain board members tonight than I did in all five months of McDonald's. Ms. Snucker, that's for you.
Any other questions?
I'm glad you're concerned about the noise for them.
Any other questions from the public? Closing, Mark?
Well, we're going to, Mr. Keller, just touching the variances for the sign. As a professional planner, you can give it a five-minute, two-year, listen, you've kind of heard the presentation in terms of the variances, but you make it official. So, Mr. Keller, fill your seats, Warren, your licensed planner as well.
Yeah, putting my planning hat on. At this point, I'm just saying the thought. So we've gone through what the variances are. Uh, Mr. Deets has explained the reasons for those. And under the municipal land use law, we need to put on the planning groups as to why those variances, uh, in our opinion, should be granted. Obviously, the decision rests with the planning board. So, um, we have, the municipal land use law at 40:55 D-70 C1 and/or C2 establishes the positive criteria that must be proved by the applicant for the grant of any variances. Um, C1 is a hardship, a uniqueness of the property, we're not seeking C1 here. We're under the C2, where we believe that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment, substantial detriment, uh, from the zoning or the master plan associated with that. And, uh-
So let's just go through them one by one. Why don't we start first with the third sign on the clock tower sign, which advertises the, the name of the center?
Right, so before, before I get into the specifics, I think there's some general, uh, purposes of planning that are set forth in the municipal land use law that are advanced by the granting of these deviations in total. I mean, we're really talking about signs. And signs are advertising, they're promotion, but they go to a bigger point of tying the entire project together. Mr. Deets, obviously, is very passionate about the shopping center and his design and the signs that go with it. So purpose A is to encourage municipal action, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. H is to encourage location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic, uh, while discouraging, you know, uh, location of such facilities and routes which would result in congestion or plate. And I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. I think to talk about now the specific sign, the third freestanding sign, the clock tower with the crossings at 10. I think as Mr. Deets has indicated, that space, the approach to that of the boulevard creates a unique focal point for the shopping center as you come in from 10. Um, or even from, just put Exhibit 82 back up. You know, as you're coming through other parts of the center, you're going to see that sign. Not straight on, but you're still going to see that as a focal point. Uh, and I think it creates, um, you know, a, a very attractive component of the overall development. Uh, the third wall sign for CubeSmart, it just makes sense. You need to know, you know, it's nice to have the sign- You need to know, you know, it's nice to have the signs on the, on the north facade and on the east facade. So when you're driving by, oh, there's the Cube Smart. But then you need to know how to get to the door, how to get to the office. And that's the purpose for that very small sign of twenty-eight square feet over the office so you know where to get to that space. Size of the signs, as Mr. Dietz said, we're talking about, the heights are conforming. We've never asked for a, a, a variant for the height of the sign. It's for six to nine inches of width to get that mesh area so that it can accommodate the style of the signs. Yeah, we could make the letters smaller, but then that goes to, put my traffic hat on, to visibility. Uh, there needs to be, and, and the biggest deviation is for the freestanding sign on Route Ten. Uh, you don't want to have a letter size on Route Ten. That is too, that creates issues with traffic flow. We all know what Route Ten's like. So, um, the monument signs, I, I mean, it's less than a square foot deviation on the two monument signs. And, and, and less than a, well, and for the one, the monument sign on Route Ten. So the negative criteria of, for planning, the board was fine that each of the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And, you know, as I said, the third freestanding sign is, i- it's not like you're going to see all three signs in one view. They are all in separate locations, all with different purposes. So you're not overpowering the visuals as somebody drives by and see, oh, I got a bunch of signs. They are all in discreet locations, it can't be seen generally from, from one vantage point. The third wall sign, I think, is very clear. It's the only sign on that facade for Cube Smart. Uh, there may be a sign at the front for the, the end cap for the retail space, but this office for Cube Smart is all the way in the back of the building on that west facade. So again, it's not viewed in the same perspective as the other two wall signs. The minor deviations in the area of the sign areas are really pretty nominal. Yes, the one on Route Ten is about a ten percent increase. It's two-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-six square feet where two-hundred square feet is permitted. Um, but it's really in that vertical element of the sign. Um, and to keep that, to be able to build that sign um, and to have those sign letters in a size that makes sense along Route Ten, I think is justified. Um, and it really is not, uh, an excessive sign. Uh, it is conforming in height. Um, and again, it's that vertical panel that is, um, driving the additional square footage. I mean, it's six or nine inches over a height of twenty-five feet. So that only, that's what makes it a twenty-one-point-six square foot deviation. Um, in closing, the variances, in my opinion, will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and can be grant, and can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and general welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on the variances?
So do professionals have any additional questions?
I, I just want, can you just go through the variances you need?
Okay.
All right, so.
So.
Yeah.
So we need a variance for, to permit a third freestanding sign and in the location that it's not permitted.
That's the clock tower.
That's the clock tower sign, correct. To permit a third wall sign for a tenant where only two wall signs per tenant are permitted.
That's the Cube Smart side with the door.
To permit the freestanding sign at Route Ten to be two-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-six square feet where two-hundred square feet is permitted. To permit the monument sign at Route Ten to be a hundred-and-twenty-five-point-seven square feet where a hundred-and-twenty-five square feet is permitted. And the two monument signs on Johnson Road to be seventy-five-point-six-six square feet where seventy-five square feet is permitted. Those are the variances that I have.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay, uh, board members, any additional questions? Public? Okay, um, I guess at this point, I would ask Mr. Burr to draft a resolution with the adjustments that we talked about. Do you want to summarize what you have and?
Don't know, there's too many to jump on. I think this was for an application for amended site plan related to building B, which is the self-storage. And it is the, something really, the something with the sign variances that were just listed out, that you've just heard. Um, which will also, the application for amendment also involves the moving of parking because the retention basin, resizing the other retention basin and the other, um, the other changes that were put forth on the record today. I'll prepare that resolution.
Well, it's also filed for phase two, it's amended preliminary and filed for phase two.
Good. Professionals, any additional questions? Board members? Okay, can I have a motion to draft a resolution for approval at the next meeting?
Prepare the resolution and grant the variances.
And grant the variances.
Yes, I would approve that.
Second?
Second.
Karen, roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Oregon Black?
Yes.
Mrs. Snucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Baglia?
Yes.
Mr. Hugh Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yeah.
And Susan.
Yes.
Thank you very much and thank you, rest in peace. Appreciate it, thank you.
I just want to say extra kudos to the young lady sitting over there, uh, who was, she, you were great.
She drew all, she drew all the plans.
Good job, welcome.
She's practicing to get her license.
So before these guys go, you own the business, we need to talk about. All right, next scheduled planning board meeting, March seventeenth, right here in the council chambers. I was your emulating president tonight's meeting, so, second?
I'll second it.
Your favorite?
Uh, can I just?
Hey.
Hi.
Hi.